I want to thank everybody for joining us this evening. Before we start a meeting, I'd like to ask Mike New from St. John's Lutheran Church to come forward. Thank you for being with us. Please stand.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Council Members, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all that you have given this community, blessing us with fine farmland, rangeland, and a place to build a community for our families. We ask you send your spirit to attend your servants who enforce the rules, serve the sick, keep the store, teach the young, who labor at their craft and minister to your word. Solomon called himself the servant king and asked not for wealth, long life, or the demise of his enemies. He asked instead for an understanding mind to govern your people, a mind that would discern between good and evil. We ask you grant that same wisdom to those who make the decision for this community. Help all citizens of Los Banos to work for a common good through useful invention, salutary regulation, helpful occupation, wholesome recreation, good manufacturing, and meaningful education. We ask you preserve this community from recession and depression, epidemic and contagion, misrule and disharmony, drought and flood, fire and holocaust. Give them the grace to obey and trust your word through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Call this meeting ordered for February 19, 2025. Commander? And if we could have a roll call, please. Lucy?
Sanders?
Here.
Chavez?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Amabile?
Here. First item is consideration, approval of the agenda as submitted. Is there any questions on the agenda? Or if we could have that motion, please?
So moved, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and second approved agenda as submitted to the council. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, ayes have it. Motion carried. Now we turn to our public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that's within the jurisdiction of our city council. This includes agenda, non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. And speakers are limited to five minutes for their presentation. Anyone that would like to come forward and speak to this city council, please do so at this time. Please state your name. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you. My name is Shandra Lewis. I am from Los Banos and I am the manager of the Rancho Los Banos Mobile Home Park. I did give to Lucy, did you give, everybody should have one. And we understand that the tiny homes are going in. I will tell you, our tenants and I myself are opposed. And I know you know why, because we had a horrible experience. And we're kind of traumatized still from that. And we don't, and so we want to put into place things that would make us feel safe as a community. Because our community is, has been really safe since everybody has left. So we're asking for surveillance cameras to observe and record at least six months retention period. All of public areas within the facility and exterior streets surrounding the facility. Cameras will provide a level of safety and security to those who live in the facility and allow staff to identify those tenants and visitors who are problematic. And the success of all overall program. The roadway outside the facility should be dedicated as private property and the management of the organization running the facility shall have responsibility to monitor its use. This will provide them with the opportunity to be responsible for any vehicles parked in the immediate area and to be able to be ensured that it does not turn into a homeless parking location. There should be no RV parking and no overnight parking allowed. We're asking for an eight-foot cinder block wall, sound wall that would go around the entire perimeter. We're asking for an additional sound wall between us, which would be, we're asking for 10 feet. And I didn't put that in there, and I'm sorry. But we're asking for the 10-foot brick wall like we have on the west side of us. Requesting a chain link fence also that will run down from the southeast corner of the back property all the way down toward roads so they have no access coming up the side of the mobile home park. Because when they come back, they get confused and come into the park. All tenants shall agree to be expedited eviction process of no more than 30 days. If current tenants rights laws prohibit and exhibited expedited eviction process and possibly provide a small financial discount of the rent amount for those that are willing to agree to the expedited eviction process management. Going on to the next one, there should be a city staff member assigned to oversee managing the management company and report to the city council quarterly. The reports should include at least all CAD incidents reported to the police department or the fire department related to the facility. They should also log any individual complaints received by residents regarding the facility operations or the tenants living there. The report should also include financial reporting to show income and expenditures of the operation of the facility to make it sure it is being run efficiently. And the city will not be left holding the bag if the organization goes bankrupt or loses staff. Any of all mitigating conditions of approval cannot be changed by future city council votes unless they have a super majority vote of four out of five votes. If the mitigating conditions work and there are no complaints, the managing company may ask for the reduction of the mitigating conditions and point out the lack of events. However, removing the conditions may lead to the future problems and it'll be harder to reestablish the conditions after they are removed. Establish a protocol with clear reporting process for area residents to speak about concerns or complaints about the project. Have a curfew of noise being generated from the facility from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM from Monday to Friday and 10:00 PM to 9:00 AM on Saturday and Sunday. Violations will be responsibility of staff to enforce and tenant violating this rule can be led to eviction after three violations in one year or refusal to stop the violation, the noise violation one time. Surveillance cameras, we would like to have them accessible to the police dispatchers and police officers during the course of their duties. City code enforcement, we would like them to inspect at least two times a year to ensure compliance with the current building codes and safety conditions and their reported violations. We would like the staff shall establish a rule for tenants to not trespass on private property and to use the trail or roadway to leave and return to the facility. There are not to cut through the private property of the Rancho Mobile Home Park or the adjacent private property to the east or west of the Mobile Home Park. Residents of the facility who trespass at the Mobile Home Park or apartments directly south of the facility and/or who annoy and harass the residents of those locations can lead to an eviction from the facility. No camping allowed in the property and surrounding areas. Facility staff are responsible to report any attempts for camping to the police. Facility will have a duty to ensure the safety of those individuals living there. Therefore, they can restrict any visitors of the facility. All visitors will have to sign in and out with no overnight stays. Those are our requests. Whether they can be done, those are our requests. And we are still in opposition of the project because we cannot endure another three and a half years. So we would like it to succeed, that they would be managed correctly and that they would, that the city would protect us from those people that do not respect our laws. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you very well, written. And we are going to have, and during the, later on in the agenda, we are going to have a presentation about this tiny homes. And I'll have staff make sure they reach out and talk to you about conditions. And I gave her an extra minute, so I will give everybody an extra minute if it's needed. Please state your name. Appreciate you being here.
My name is Claudia Nunez. I live in the Mobile Home Park. And first of all, I wanted to bring your guys' attention to, when we salute the flag, all of us salute the flag, and it says, "With liberty and justice for all." Where is our justice? We're not getting any. You guys might look at me like, oh, man, but that's the truth. We have asked for different stuff. Nothing, for three and a half years, we fought this. And the, I know a lot of you are different. But I feel personally that when we talked, when we came and stated what was going on, the council members had their head up their ass. Because they didn't pay attention to anything we said. There was a couple that did. Okay, I'll give them our gratitude. But the others would look at us like, oh, my God, here comes those stupid people again. We lived there. We've worked. You know, I know a lot of the members that live there. We have worked all our lives. Nobody thinks we're special. The city doesn't go and take us gallons of water like they do the homeless. We need help too sometimes. Living, I don't know if any of you live on social security. It's hard. It's really hard. Sometimes I tell myself, am I going to pay this bill or am I going to eat? You know, nobody should have to do that. But I have to do what I have to do in life. All of us do. But we need your guys' help. Please, please try to help us because we have gone through so much crap. And if, like I told them before, if your family, any member of your family lived there in the Mobile Home Park and went through the stuff that all of us went through, they would have moved fast. They would have done something about it. But they didn't do anything. They wouldn't listen to us. I guess they thought we didn't know what we were talking about. We lived there. We've seen so much horrible things. And we just want you guys to know that we need your help. We're begging for your help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we do hear you loud and clear. Hello, please state your name.
My name is Lidovina Moreno, and I lived at the Rancho Mobile Park for 13 years. And I just wanted to say that that is a really nice mobile park, clean. Shandra here, our manager, does a really good job keeping it that way. I can walk around the park at 10, 12 o'clock at night and feel safe. But that wasn't the case during the pandemic when we had all the homeless behind there. At some occasions, when I was walking, my husband and I would run into them, handing stuff over to the other homeless on the other side of the fence from the mobile park. So they were probably throwing stuff, they were stealing from our park. And then one occasion, I found a homeless in my parking, and that was really scary. And this just really concerns me because I'm a mom. We have a lot of children in the mobile park, a lot of elderly, and all of us. We just want it to be the same. We don't want to be scared. I want to be able to walk around at 9:00, 10:00 and, you know, do my one-mile walk every night like I like to and not feel afraid because we're going to have so many homeless back there. And I know that a lot of them don't like to work, so they're going to come steal. That's where they're going to get their money, and we're going to be the easiest target for them because we're just right there next to them. And we've had a lot of, we've had some car theft. They steal our equipments. They, it's just really scary. I just wish and I prayed about it that this wouldn't happen and that you guys would find a better place. Because there's also a bus stop that's in the Gilbert Gonzalez and Ward where you have a lot of little children from elementary to high school that walk there. And, you know, they, sometimes they have to catch the bus and it's still dark. And that's kind of concerning. I feel like them being there, they're going to bring more drugs closer to our home, closer to our kids. I'm talking about fentanyl, their syringes, them exposing themselves. Because I'm a bus driver. I work out of the bus yard behind Western Motors. And we had that homeless there, and still, I still get, I see a lot of things that I don't want these kids to see. I would love to feel, when I say that, I mean sexual, sexual. And I'm just tired of it. I'm just tired of it. And that makes me really sad to think that they're going to be closer to us. You know, I deal with it already at work, and then now it's like they're coming closer. And it's just, it takes my peace away, and I don't want to feel that way. So please, listen to all the petitions that we have, the rules. Keep us safe, keep us and our children safe, because ever since they left, we've been good until now. We've been good. We haven't had any issues, maybe minor ones, but not as bad as thinking, just the thought of someone got murdered back there. Because I know a couple of people did get murdered and the exploded RV. And that sound right there was like so loud, you can't imagine. You're like in your home eating and then you hear, it's like, did someone's mobile home get exploded? And you know, what happened? And gunshots, not to mention gunshots. When they were there, I heard boom, gunshots, and I heard people getting murdered, screaming. You're sleeping at 1, 2 o'clock in the morning, and you have homeless walking, screaming, "Help me, help me." And you just don't know anymore, like, are there drugs? Is it real? Is it for reals? You know, you just call the cops? It's just, I just want to keep our peace the way it is, sir. Please, do whatever you can to keep it that way. I know they deserve a second chance, but just make sure that we're safe, our community's safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Anyone else? Please come forward. Please state your name. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Mark Zicaros. I live at 1917 Cogswell Circle. I just, I'm here also to voice my opposition to the tiny homes. And I'll tell you, first of all, I like everything that's desperately needed. You know, I just, I just want to remind all of you just, you know, where that tiny home will be. It's 1.2 miles to Los Banos High School. It's .8 miles to Mercy Springs Elementary School. It's one mile to the junior high school, .7 miles to College Greens Park, 300 feet away from the Mobile Home Park. I think we can all agree, and this is not being unrealistic, that the majority of homeless have either substance abuse issues or mental issues. And I think that's fair to say, not all, but a large majority. And I just want to remind everybody that those schools and those kids, I coach at the high school as well, those kids are walking that area every day, right? You have elementary school kids, you have high school kids, walking through there every day. The police have their hands full. They're busy. But on top of what she said, I would, I would ask for at least, at a minimum, a stepped-up police presence throughout that area. I mean, I don't think that's asking a lot. I understand that we are strained in the police department ourselves. But I don't think that's asking a lot. I think, you know, a stepped-up police presence, if not anything perhaps a deterrent. Further, you know, on a non, you know, being a nice guy, I'll just be point-blank. For me, living in the area, you know, we just had my neighbor sell his house. He's got 510 for it. It's a pretty small home. But when I go to sell my home, I'm going to take a bite of about anywhere from, we'll say 150 to 200K equity, right? Because what's your selling point? Hey, there's an elementary school here, but there's also a homeless place right there. Doesn't look good on the brochure, right? I mean, let's be honest. I mean, I think we can all agree on that. Also, I mean, the, we look at right next to the police department now, the homeless encampment there now. It started out nice. It's expanded. And I know that you are limited, I know the police themselves are limited on what they can do, but it's an eyesore, and I don't want that eyesore climbing into my area that I take care of. And I'm sure that the people at the mobile homes don't want that encroaching on their area. We do, you know, we try and keep our houses nice, our neighborhood nice. I'd like to be able to walk around without some guy screaming at you with no shoes and, you know, trying to climb your fence and that type of stuff. So I would just simply ask that, on top of what she is asking, but also a stepped-up police presence. Because if this is a done deal already, it's done. But what you can do is you can mitigate the negative from it. I'm all for giving people second chances. Great idea. But along with those second chances, they have to follow the rules. And on top of that, I think the city has an obligation to protect the citizens who are obeying the laws now. And that's all I'd say. So hopefully I didn't take up too much time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Welcome. Good evening. For the record, Greg Kostetler. Last meeting, I was here to talk about helping the community get things done. The selection was a mandate to fix things and in need for transparency moving forward to create jobs, clean up the town, infill vacant land, annex land, and deal with the homeless. Some staff and departments appear as if not got the message. For example, our company asked planning department if we could schedule a north point map of the agenda. We were informed that they still had not received the traffic report that was bought two and a half years ago. An email dated January 19, 2024 stated that there was a thank you went from the planning department to the consultant saying, "Thank you for completing and delivering the study to the city." Yet a year later, the department stated that they had not received it. This is typical of the department. I continuously receive complaints about the department from other stakeholders that would rather not come and speak. A large company doing business in Los Banos and large in the county tried to expand in our city, and they end up expanding in the county. And I don't know why we let this happen, and the list goes on. Some of the people in that department make over $200,000 package, four times the average income in Los Banos. Why has the planning department not annexed land for 18 years? There is not any land the school can build their elementary, junior, or high schools on. I talked to the school, I met with the president of the school, and I asked, "Pick out where would you like to build a school?" And he said, "Right there." I said, "It's in the county." I said, "Where else?" "Right there. That's in the county." "Pick one in the city." He says, "Well, that's not where we want. We want there and there." So it hasn't been annexed. So we'll try to get some land moving, annexed. The other thing is we're not in compliance with our housing element as I know it. In addition to that, I spent $262,000 behind the Dairyman Store in Los Banos on a half acre to build apartments, and still haven't got a permit. Also, the planning department over time in the last few years, which I'm tired of, is truthful information being spread about Shaughnessy Park. And I stand ready to help the city get it built. I still own the land and the Deansville Boulevard. The city accepted, and I'll say this probably for the fifth time at this meeting over the years, that they accept it as complete, and there's a reason why they did. But it needs to be fixed, and I'm willing to help. And there's money left in my account to complete it as it should have been completed, but the city didn't get the right of way. And the former city manager said, "We're not going to spend one dime on it." And the former city manager said, we're not gonna spend one dime on it. All these situations continue to go on years after years until this mayor and council is elected, I would suspect that things will change. It bothers me that we buy cars and pickups outside our county. The county dealers were not consulted in a fair enough way to bid and sell to this city. Wrong. It appears also the city contracted for videos with the company. It appears that that was rigged and I have documents here with me tonight and I'll have them available to show you. And the owner of that company, I understand, some months before the bid was let as the former mayor had to step down because he was a friend, used the N-word on social media. And that was a blowover by the former council, ignored that. And I think that that contract is not in compliance today, what he gets paid for every month, that company. And I'm gonna end there. I got lots more for another meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else, please come forward. Hello? Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Rossmo, resident of Los Banos. Um, with the recent wildfires, um, many communities have taken a step back to assess their infrastructure. What has happened in the past, um, many communities have essentially ran out of water, lack of water pressure, um, to keep those fires at bay. And so for me, I'd be interested to see a presentation in the future from our fire department in terms of how our infrastructure is set up, especially as fires are on the rise as every summer increases and fire seasons are seeming to run longer, uh, year after year. So looking at our infrastructure, our fire hydrants, um, how much water pressure we have to maintain those fires, uh, if we have multiple fires throughout the city, how long, how much water storage capacity do we have? Uh, how long can we sustain keeping those fires at bay? Uh, what type of infrastructure improvements do we need? Uh, I think this is a great time to make those assessments, uh, before the fire season begins again. Um, just being prepared in advance should these type of disasters happen. Uh, just wanted to put that on the forefront of this council. Uh, and then lastly, just want to thank the, the mayor and the, uh, Mayor Pro Tem for the opportunity to interview for the planning commission. Uh, I know I wasn't selected, but, um, I just want to congratulate the person that, uh, will get appointed later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, please come forward. Please state your name. Welcome.
Samuel Mendoza. Yes, this is my first time ever here, but I've had a, a couple of questions. First of all, how many of you have ever been out to a homeless encampment inside? One? Two? Okay. Oh, no, these guys, just these guys are here. This is who you guys are talking to. You know, you guys, so really you're not sure of who you're dealing with, really. You do, because you've been out there. Uh, we, me and my wife, we've been, we've been dealing with them for like over about three years maybe through a church. And every time we deal with them, not one has ever asked to get up, get out of there. They never asked, no one's ever asked, hey, can you help me get off the streets? Can you help me get out there? No one. And then I, I, we go out there and you see all this, I mean, it's a mess. It's a mess and it's getting worse, like they said, it's getting worse. It's getting, it's building up, building up, building up. Pretty soon it's gonna be out of control. I just want to know what's the difference between the people in the homeless encampment and people that own homes? Is there a difference? Rights? Come on, you guys, come on. I need somebody to answer, yes or no? Is there a difference?
We, we can't, we can't answer your questions.
Oh, you guys can't? Okay.
We can't answer questions.
Okay. Well, I, I don't think there is because they're citizens, we're citizens, they have to follow what's below. We first moved in in two thousand nine and I got, uh, cited for having my kid's basketball court in the street. I got cited for that. Like, wow, this is a, you know, this is a good community. Just they, they, the people care. But if I threw a kind of garbage in my front yard, my neighbors will complain, I'll get cited, I'll get ticketed or something. So what's the difference between a homeless encampment and us? I get a ticket if I walk my dog without a leash, correct? There's a leash law. I was just out there two weekends ago, had a fight, dogs chasing me. I was walking real slow. I felt their little teeth on me. And it's not their fault though. The dog, it's not the dog's fault, but they're out there eating on each other. I mean, it's, it's, it's bad. But I'm, I just, my wife, we were just wondering, what's the difference? You know, they, they can do all this, but then as a citizen or as a person who owns a home, we get in trouble for it. I'll get a ticket if I throw a piece of garbage out my car window, littering. But over here, they're just everywhere. There has to be a consequence, a consequence for everybody, for everything they, they do and we do. There shouldn't be a, a line where we have them here. Cause that's what I feel, that you had, that the city just puts them there, you guys think you have some kind of a control over them. You don't. Honestly, you guys, you guys have no control over these guys. I've dealt with these guys, I've talked to these guys, I've sat down with these guys. And a lot of them didn't come to this place because of drugs and, uh, mental issues. A lot of them because they ran out of resources. Their families got kicked out, they ran out of money, their cars broke now, so they went out to out here and they got stuck there. Cause I talked to a lot of these guys. One guy was a veteran and he, and I asked him, and he didn't look homeless. His name was, uh, 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 I found out he, he didn't look homeless. And I asked him, I go, are you homeless? He was, yeah. And I go, but you don't look homeless. He was, I try not to. My parents are, and I asked, what's your story then? He was a veteran, then he was an engineer for P G and E. And all this stuff, but he had a bad relationship with his wife, got divorced, all this bad stuff happened. And, uh, uh, he started hearing about the, about their, their, their rail, rail, they call it. And people were telling him, if you go there, you're never gonna get out. So he just went there out of curiosity and he got stuck there. I, I think maybe six, seven years he was stuck there. But he tried to uphold his appearance, you know, not to look homeless. Or they found him dead over here by one, uh, the D and D office one time. They found him dead. And I was like, man, these guys, a lot of them didn't come out by choice, they ran out of resources. I mean, what do you, what is the city doing to help the next wave of homeless people not to become homeless? Is there, is there affordable housing? Uh, housing to that, a young couple with a little kid where as, where he, they can afford to live in a home, maybe get laid off, but still afford to live in a home then instead of going to the car, living in the car, eating out of the car, going to the, to the homeless and getting stuck there. What are we doing? What are you guys doing? What, what can we do? I think a preventive care from homelessness. Cause a lot of these guys out there now, they don't, they, they're there. They don't want to get out of there. But what are we doing to prevent the next wave of homeless people? Cause that's gonna get worse. I mean, we seen it when they first opened. It was one square and then they started overflowing and then the other one overflowing. Now they're coming this way. So and then we hear about people coming from other towns coming over here now. It's just so easy. Fifteen second slap. I'd say just, no, there's no difference between us and everybody else. If they're breaking the law, we break the law, we both gotta suffer the same consequences. Go out there to see who you're really dealing with. These tiny homes I hear about, I seen these guys put in hotels and they just tore it up. They're not, they're not capable of it. So instead of worrying about them, worry about the next wave of people coming who might be homeless. Because eventually they're gonna run out of resources for the prices that it costs to live in this town. Or you gotta commute, there's no jobs here. You're gonna have another wave. Might be your grandkids. Might be one of you guys, when you guys run out of resources one of these days, you're not gonna have families, you're not gonna have nobody else. You're gonna have to go somewhere, live in a hotel, your money runs out, you're gonna find yourself on the street. It's not always mental health and it's not always drugs. A lot of times you just ain't got nowhere to go.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else, please come forward. Okay, I do not see or hear anyone coming forward. I will close the public forum at this time. And before we go on to the consent agenda, I just want to state, we, we hear you loud and clear. We are, it's, in the past, the council, the city has been very hampered by state regulations. Things are changing and we're putting together a pretty good plan, I think, that has to be fair to everybody. We, we understand that. So we will move on to the consideration approval of the consent agenda. And with that, items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on one motion unless any council member wants to take an item off for consideration. So what's the council's decision with this? So Lucy, go ahead and, yeah, read the consent agenda. And did you want those letters? There was a letter during the public forum, did you need to read a letter or no?
No. There is one from Mr. Salsito. It's posted on the website regarding the voting choice.
Okay, so if, if you write us a letter and it comes after three, three o'clock is what it is, then it gets posted onto our website. You can view it on that. Uh, we have some letters that came tonight that will be read when we get to that agenda item. But right now, Lucy, please tell us what's on the consent agenda.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers two four nine, seven two seven through two four nine, nine five six in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, twenty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. City Council Resolution Number six eight seven five, accepting the community center perimeter fence project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder. City Council Resolution Number six eight seven six, accepting the three city-owned parking lot improvement project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder. City Council Resolution Number six eight seven seven, accepting grant deed for a ten-foot public utility easement dedication of approximately one thousand three hundred nine square feet of land along a portion of frontage for lot number forty at the corner of Paharo Drive and Summit Drive in the subdivision, the village's seven Phase One B Unit One, and authorizing the interim city manager to execute the associated documents. City Council Resolution Number six eight seven eight, approving the acceptance of a three thousand five hundred Elks Lodge gratitude grant and amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget by increasing the appropriation amount for expenditures and revenues in the amount of three thousand five hundred for the Los Banos Animal Shelter. City Council Resolution Number six eight seven nine, adopting the multi-jurisdictional local roadway safety plan, L R S P, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
At this time, is there any items that council would like to discuss before we move on?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, I'd like to just, uh, pull item six B, as in boy, and six F for discussion.
So that's, uh, B is City Council Resolution six eight seven five for the community center perimeter fence. And with that, uh, you have any questions? You want Joe to talk?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to propose to staff, uh, there was a statement in here that there were bids, um, for the community center fencing in June eighteenth, twenty-four. However, the bids were rejected on July seventeenth, twenty-four. Um, for transparency for the community, could you tell us why, um, Mr. Heim, that bid was rejected the first time?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so we had posted it for bid, as you mentioned, um, and it was, uh, ended up being rejected by city council on July seventeenth. Uh, the primary reason was just available funding. Um, we had originally budgeted, uh, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand for the total project and the two, two hundred and twenty-four thousand was just exceeding that. Um, council and the city manager at the time didn't feel like they wanted to pursue an amendment for additional funding.
Item F?
Um, yes, item F, uh, let's see here.
That's the multi-jurisdiction roadway safety plan?
Yes. Okay, so I, I read through this and, um, it, it encompasses a lot of information about, uh, Merced County. When, when you went to the county website and you looked at the various cities and what they were proposing, what's in our pack tonight is specifically for Los Banos. Um, but particularly I am, um, I'm concerned about a roundabout that's being proposed on Mercy Springs Road at the intersection of Dove and Wilmont. And we only had one community meeting in regards to that proposal. Um, I have issues with community meetings that are held early during the day or four, five o'clock in the evening when a lot of our residents are still trying to get home from work. And, and I would, Mayor, I'd like to see some of these meetings be on the weekends so we can get more participants out to have a say about, uh, a project that's coming before Los Banos. I, uh, I know that at the meeting, uh, there was great, uh, opposition in a roundabout for, uh, one sixty-five and, uh, the two streets, Dove and Wilmont. Uh, the, the residents that were there were more in favor of a four-way stop sign, uh, a four-way stoplight, I'm sorry, uh, for various reasons like, you know, during hauling season, we have high-speed traffic with the haulers trying to get product from the fields to the processing plants. Um, a roundabout in that area would be really difficult for them to get through. There was a proposal for, um, uh, in-ground, um, uh, signalization, sort of like what we have on, uh, Ortega Lita and on Mercy Springs for the kids crossing. I, I, I think that's quite dangerous, at least to me, for people who are trying to get across that busy highway and the only place that it would be, would be on the north end of Mercy Springs. Um, I have been, roundabouts, I don't really have that much objection to them when it's inside a residential or part of a community area where there's not a lot of high-speed moving traffic. But on a highway, it gets really, really difficult. I've been on the one off of, um, one fifty-six in Hollister, uh, headed over to Monterey. I had a conference to go to and, um, it was still dark, very poor lighting and I had a really difficult time getting into that roundabout, trying to, to get all, uh, continuing uh, west on, on one fifty-six. So, um, I, I made up my mind, if I have to, had to go to Monterey again, I'm just going over one fifty-two and head down one oh one. It's safer. Um, there is, um, there, um, there, there were supposed to be other meetings for our community as stated at that meeting. Uh, I can't remember the date when we had that meeting, but certainly it's, it's been quite some time. Uh, I would like to see something scheduled again because it looks like, according to this report, that, um, our staff is in conversation now with Caltrans, uh, making identifications about this particular project. And I think the community needs to have more input on whether or not we really want to have a roundabout on one sixty-five. Personally, I just don't see it as being a safe project. I, I prefer for me to have a red light there controlling the traffic four ways and therefore as these trucks start, uh, moving forward, if they see that light turns, that they can as normal decelerate and be prepared for a stoplight. But a roundabout and one pedestrian crossing on the north end with no other option of controlling it, to me seems quite dangerous. So, um, that, that's kind of my input on that one, uh, Mayor and Council, is I'd really like to see, um, uh, more meetings with the community on that roundabout before staff moves forward with any kind of recommendations with Caltrans. Uh, we just need to have more input on that.
Chuck, you want to say a few words on that?
Yes, sir. Uh, Councilmember Lewis, members of council, um, with respect to the, um, the local road safety plan, this, um, this, uh, action makes the, the roads eligible for funding. If, uh, in the report, it speaks of a roundabout, it also speaks of options to a roundabout. You don't have to have a roundabout, uh, at one sixty-five and Mercy Springs, it also refers to you can do other improvements. But what basically what this, uh, plan does and report does is makes the city eligible for other funding, uh, as it comes along through Merced, uh, uh, County Association of Government or the state. Um, and I, I, I like to recommend that we keep all our streets eligible for available funds. Um, that means we, uh, we can apply for them, we don't have to accept them if we don't want them, but at least it keeps our projects eligible for other funding. Um, And just to underscore the fact that this project speaks to improvements, but it's not specific. It says there are options, and it doesn't, it does not commit us to any specific improvement specifically. The one on Stonewood and Mercy Springs, it suggests a roundabout, but it doesn't commit us.
So I think before we get any closer, we're going to have to have a public meeting. I'm going to give people's thoughts on that. I know most people will probably be against it, especially with tomato trucks in the summertime. That would be very difficult, I think, but we need to have some community meetings on that before we go forward with Caltrans. There's also the roundabout at Volta Road on 152 they're talking about. And unfortunately, I sent everybody, my first MCAG meeting, it looks like that's getting funded through Caltrans. So that might be a little late, but we can still see what we can do.
And thank you for clarifying that, Mayor. I'm not talking about the eligibility for funding. I'm talking about the project that was discussed and proposed to go in. And there was discussion, not only about the roundabout, but about the four-way stoplight, which would cost us a million dollars more and maybe adding a little bit of time on the project to get it done. But for me, I'd rather see our community safer. And roundabouts are being pushed by the state of California. But, you know, it is our community, and we as a council need to have a say as to how that is going to happen. So if there's any chance that we can move forward and have more meetings before any kind of decision or further conversation goes with Caltrans and our staff, I think that's important for our community. Thank you. And that's it.
Any other comments from council? And if we could have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve consent agenda as submitted. Any questions or comments? I do have a comment. I'm going to say to Blanche, thank you for the, going after the $3,500 from the Elks Club, and thank to the Elks Club for allowing us to get that for our animal shelter. We do appreciate that. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, ayes have. Okay, next item, item seven, Mid Valley Disposal Presentation and Announcement of Recycler of the Year. And Chuck, you want to introduce this, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Mid Valley Disposal makes an annual presentation of their service provided to the city of Los Banos, and they're making their presentation tonight.
The council and mayor for having us tonight. My name is Billy Hanson. I am the Recycling Programs Manager at Mid Valley Disposal. And since there are some new faces, I'd like to recommend, not recommend, introduce to you my team that's here tonight. We have our Operations District Manager, that's Jay. We've got Operations Manager Rick next to him. We've got Marissa. She is our new recycling program specialist. So you'll be seeing her face in Los Banos as well. We've got Federico, Route Supervisor, and we have Teresa here. She is your recycling coordinator. So she's been here since we started service in Los Banos. So that is the team. So I am going to give a bit of an update on what we did in 2024. And then at the end, I'll announce the recycler of the year. So to start off, we do a lot of community events here in Los Banos, which we love. We love how many you guys have. It seems like we get to do a new event every year, and so we look forward to continuing that in 2025. So these are the events and presentations that Teresa was able to be a part of last year. You know, Career Day at one of the local preschools where we get to bring the trucks and do a little recycling presentation with the kids. And the kids get to get up in the truck and honk the horn. So we love that. Some school events, the Science Wax Museum, which I believe was a high school kind of career day event. Pennington's Little Friends Daycare, so another daycare presentation event. National Night Out, we did the binational backpack giveaway event. And I actually had the opportunity to step in for Teresa at that one, which was wow, so many people coming out to get the backpacks and getting information from different resources in the community. I don't think I had a chance to even take a breath how many folks came through that event. It was really fun. Trunk or Treat, always fun. We always decorate the trucks, give away a bunch of candy. West Side Career Day, Christmas Parade. You know, we love being in all the parades that we can. We light up the trucks, the kids love it. And then a new one this year was the Hot Cocoa with the Popo, which was really fun. We, yeah, we had fun at that one. So a ton of events. This is probably one of the most event-heavy cities that we get the opportunity to serve. So it makes our job fun. We look forward to continuing that. Outreach and education, so this is what Teresa does, right? So she is in the streets, working with business owners, property managers, making sure they have all their recycling education. She completed 460 site visits alone in your city. So that means she's going onsite. She's making sure all the customers' containers are there, they're in working order. She's looking inside, giving, giving education on how the customer may be able to increase recycling or improve what their practices are at their business. Maybe working with a customer to get a waiver if they don't need a certain container. And we distributed over 95,000 pieces of education in the community. And, you know, part of SB 1383, which is this new solid waste legislation that we all have to comply with, is, you know, edible food recovery. So our edible food recovery specialist that we have was able to get all that necessary education to your large food generators in the city as well. Another big program of SB 1383 is contamination monitoring. Contamination monitoring is kind of something that's not new to Mid Valley Disposal. It's something that we've done for years, just as an education tool to educate folks on what goes in what container. But SB 1383 asked us to standardize or accept their standard procedure for a route study. So what that means is we have to identify every route that runs through the city. And we have to sample a certain percentage of every route. And that means we're on the street looking in, you know, 10%, 5% of every container on that route. So that's what I'm going to kind of talk about in the next couple slides, is the results of that. So you guys have 93 routes that run through your city. That's quite a few routes. So we did 5% sampling of every route in your city. It took about a month of preparation, working with my operations team, and about a week in the field. Teresa and Federico did that all on their own. It was not, I mean, that's a, that's a ton of work, right? And they're walking, looking in containers, and doing that study, so. And these are the results. And I realize that the image on the screen is kind of small. But if you're looking at that organics bar at the top, that image represents every organics container that we looked in. The dark color on the left is the number of carts that we found to have contamination inside. The light color on the right side, the yellow color, is the carts that we found where they were doing an extraordinary job. So we left them a good job tag. The good job tag is part of the program that we wanted to develop. It's not a requirement, but we didn't want to just do this study and, you know, tell people, you know, you're doing this wrong. We wanted to also highlight folks that are doing a really wonderful job. So we developed that tag, and if they receive one, they use it as a voucher to receive a countertop food waste collection pail. And we deliver them to their door, and we put swag in there. So it's a fun little part of the program that we developed. So you'll see organics, trash, and recycling. Out of all three streams, it looks like people are most confused on the recycling container. But that's very standard across the board. It's very confusing. So this study will continue every year. And we're actually going to be in Los Banos doing this study again in about two or three weeks. So we'll have some more data for you guys the next time we're here. And the recycler of the year. So I don't believe we have anybody tonight, right? No. We really wanted to get a representative from the recipient here tonight, but they couldn't make it. But I did write something that I'd like to read. Do you still recognize them? Tonight, we are proud to recognize Juliana's Bakery as our recycler of the year. Juliana's Bakery was not perfect at the start, but their story is a testament to what having an open mind and being willing to embrace change and being open to receiving education can do. Ownership worked with Teresa to right-size their containers, meaning make adjustments based on what they're producing to have the right-size container for each stream. And Teresa was able to work with staff to give them that necessary education, what goes into each container. And they embraced that change and even a new, you know, the new organics container. Now what do we do with food waste, right? So they embraced that program with dedication, and I think they're setting a shining example for other businesses in the community. Their ability to consistently and efficiently separate food waste and recycling highlights their leadership and environmental stewardship. So Juliana's Bakery demonstrates how small actions can make a big impact when done with intention and responsibility. So we would like to recognize Juliana's Bakery as the 2024 recycler of the year. They will receive this award. We will go hand-deliver it to them tomorrow. So hopefully, they can place it in their business and be proud of that. Because, yeah, yeah, we should, yeah, yes, they know, they know they're getting it. We've been like begging them to come, but people have, you know, they got to work. So that is the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I do have a question. What's the future holding in your containers? Is there ever a chance that they could go out to the street locked, and then your trucks unlock them automatically or something like that to prevent people from going through recycles and things like that? Anything like that even possible?
I want Jay to answer that question.
Something like that?
I want Jay to answer that question because I could pretend that I have as much knowledge as he does in this area, but I do not.
I know, that's, that's a tough one, but.
I don't always get him here, so.
We wanted to get you up to talk.
Thank you, council. Jay Fowler, District Manager, Mid Valley. There is a locking cart. It's used mostly in bear country. It's probably about three times the cost, and it is, it's probably about 75% working as far as the mechanism. It's a gravity-fed thing where it will unlock when it tips over, so the driver doesn't have to get out. Most communities manage scavenging through law enforcement and some other type of ordinances. If you wanted a proposal for locking containers, you'd have to sit down with Gary and talk to him about that. Fair enough?
Okay, well, we don't have any bears yet around here.
I know.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Very nice presentation. Oh, we have, we have another question for you.
Sorry, Deborah.
That's okay. Well, I'm really happy about Los Banos and how we're handling our recycling. So in comparison to other cities that you guys are doing services for, how is Los Banos doing?
You know, I think you guys are doing really well, and there's a few factors that can contribute to that. One is being that the city is taking an active approach to contamination. With the contamination fee program that you have, it incentivizes wanting to put things in the right container. So we see, we see in our cities that have that program, less contamination. Now, when we're talking about the contamination study that we did, I would like to, it's hard because we're looking at certain sections of routes. So I would like to get a few years of data before I could really say one way or another, like, you know, comparing to another city. But I think you guys are doing fantastic. That program that you guys have in place, it really incentivizes folks. You know, they receive the warning for the first, a first time putting something in the wrong container. They want to call us, and they want to figure out, okay, I don't want to get a fee. So I'm going to call Teresa and figure out, well, why is this the wrong container? Where should I put this in the future? And that really helps. So I think comparatively, you guys are doing wonderfully.
One of the things that I've heard around the community is that sometimes people think that animal waste is organic.
Yes.
And it isn't.
That is the second time I've had this conversation tonight.
It belongs in the trash can. I mean, I wrapped mine up in a plastic bag, couple of plastic bags, and put it in the trash can. But I guess the reason I'm bringing it up because the organics that you guys make ends up going on, you know, in people's yard and their flower beds and their vegetable beds and stuff. And so do we have a large problem with animal waste in our organics?
I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say it's a large problem, no. I would say that the, so here, I'll, I'll talk about what like your top contaminants are. And if that's something you guys would like to see included in that presentation moving forward, I can include that as well. But what we see as the top contamination in your organic stream through this study is going to be plastic bags, right? Or just general trash. So people may be bagging yard waste. So that plastic bag, you know, we don't want it in the, in the organics. And sometimes folks just run out a room in their regular trash can, and they've got two other colors. And sometimes that's just where it ends up. So I wouldn't say that pet waste is like one of the top ones, but I would say it is one of those, like, the ones that causes a lot of confusion. And I can understand why because it is, it's an organic material. But yes, you're correct. We do make the CDFA certified organic compost. We don't want the pet waste in there. So if anyone in the audience didn't know that, it goes in your trash. Now, when we're talking about your recycling bin, our top contaminant items are going to be your film plastic. So there's quite a bit of confusion around film plastic because you think plastic, surely that's recyclable. And when I say film plastic, I mean shrink wrap, Ziploc bags, your film plastic, like Amazon packages. All that kind of real thin, filmy-type plastic is not recyclable. And so that kind of brings up the other, you know, you're bagging your recyclables. So we always kind of ask that recyclables go in that blue can loose or use a paper bag or a box to kind of collect your recyclables in. Styrofoam's another big one, not recyclable, but, you know, that's a whole nother topic of things. Sometimes have that recycle symbol on there that it can be very misleading. Yeah, so, yeah.
So there are products on the market for green waste that are real thin.
Compostable bags.
Is that allowed in the green waste?
They are not allowed in the green waste, no. So that's one of, another big question that we get a lot is what about these compostable bags? You see them a lot now in the grocery stores in your produce section. I think some stores have made that switch. In Mid Valley Disposal's process, to process your organics, we cannot accept it. And that's because of our CDFA certification. And also, we have tested different compostable bags or biodegradable bags in our system, and they do not break down the way that they are advertised to. So even at the end of the process, it kind of just turns into like a lump of melted sludge is the best way to kind of describe it. It's not something that you would want in your compost. So unfortunately, at this time, there's nothing on the market that we have found to be like a bio bag or a compostable bag that works in the system. The paper bag is great, yes.
Well, I'm going to admit it, I'm guilty. And tonight, I'm going to go in my garbage. Well, I, I'm gonna admit it, I'm guilty, and tonight I'm gonna go in my garbage can and pull out that compostable bag and put, you know, and just dump the, the compost in the trash can.
Yeah, that's why, well, do you have one of our countertop food waste pails?
I have, I have one, and, uh, I put the plastic bag in there to keep, you know, uh, the scent away.
Right.
And, uh, but I thought it was, you know, based on the fact that it says it degrades in thirty days, but I didn't realize that, you know, it wasn't something that we accepted. So that's good to know.
Yeah, and, and I always recommend to folks, because sometimes they've already bought it, and I, I say, hey, use it, use your bags.
And then dump it in the.
Use your bags and throw those bags in the, uh, in your trash bin. Not full of food waste or anything like that, but, because those will break down in the landfill over time, and surely that's better than plastic, which will stay around much longer, but it just doesn't work in our compost system.
Thank you for all the information. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, we appreciate it. And that was informational only, so no action will be taken. And next item is consideration of options for calling a special meeting, election, excuse me, to fill the vacancy created by Councilmember Lambert's resignation. And this would be a Resolution 6880, if the council wants to consider that. And with that, we'll go to our city attorney, Mr. Bill Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As you recall, this item was before you at the last meeting. Uh, you asked for it to come back to you. Uh, as you know, Councilmember Lambert resigned on January fifteenth. Uh, his resignation leaves a vacancy in the District One Council seat. However, because of the current makeup of the City Council, which is consists of two of you that are hereby appointment, uh, state law requires that this seat be filled by special election. Um, you have two choices, um, that we'd like you to consider tonight. Uh, one choice would be an all-male ballot on August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, at a cost to the city of approximately forty-five thousand dollars, or a mail-and-in-person vote on November fifth, twenty-twenty-five, at an approximate cost of seventy-six thousand dollars to the city. I think we did extensive, um, advertisement of the meeting tonight in social media and such, so that you could hear from your constituents. And we have no particular recommendation, other than that you adopt one of the resolutions that has been submitted in your packet. The first resolution is for the August twenty-sixth date. Second resolution is for the November fifth date. They all have the same number. I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions of Mr. Vaughn before we open up to the public? Okay, do you see or hear anyone? So I will now open this up to the public, anyone that would like to speak on this issue. If we should go with the August date, or go with the November fourth, which they'll both include mail-in ballots. The November fourth will include a, uh, in-person and mail-in ballot. Of course, it costs around thirty thousand dollars more. Anyone like to speak on this issue, please come forward. You have three minutes to speak. November fifth? Okay, I have fourth on my, okay, November fifth. Please come forward.
Hi, Kathy Ballard. Um, I'm not in District One, but as all of you know, and people that watch our council meeting, know I'm a major tightwad. And, um, it seems it would still allow people to vote, but it, it's a reduction of thirty thousand dollars. Um, I did make a mistake when I spoke last meeting, and Mr. Vaughn corrected me. I thought you had to replace him at a certain time, but that's neither here nor there. Um, I think the sooner that you have a representative for District One, the better for everybody here. And the people in that district's voices would be heard. So I would appreciate the sooner election and mail-only. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to give us your opinion? We, we did receive one letter, uh, recommending to, uh, and it's on, it's online on the website, web recommending November election date. So we have to turn it over to the council. I'm gonna go ahead and close the forum, since no one else is coming forward. No one else wants to say anything? Oh, it is, it is November fourth, too. Okay, I'll turn it over to the council. Uh, questions, comments?
Mayor, um, yes, I'd like to make some comments. Um, I, I think some people think that, um, people's right to vote is being taken away by not having poll vote, because someone is used to going to a poll. Um, this, this is going to be a, a rare special election. And, um, in no way is the city inhibit, inhibiting anyone of their constitutional right to vote. We all get our ballots in the mail here in California. And we have a choice to fill it out and take it and drop it off at the polling site, or fill it out, take it, and drop it off at the city box, or mail it in. I believe in this election, if we went with the, uh, August election, uh, everyone in District One will get their ballot in the mail and have two options. You can mail it in, or you could drop it off at a box that will probably be provided at City Hall. That's my understanding. So the only, the only option that's taken out of there would be poll voting. And, and of course, the reason why it's gonna cost us more, because the county has to have their employees come out for the day and provide that service for people who generally go to the polls and vote. But I, I don't really see why we need to have this extra expenditure, uh, for almost, you know, thirty thousand dollars, a little bit over thirty thousand dollars, um, to conduct this vote, when it, it could cost the city less money to have it by a mail-in ballot, ballot only. Um, I would hope that most people are gonna turn out and, or, or mail their ballots in or bring them to City Hall for District One, but I suspect this is probably gonna be a low-turnout vote, because it's really, really off an election cycle. So I, you know, I would be in favor of the lesser expense, which would be in August, because it just financially makes sense for our city not to spend additional money, uh, for one place to vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Comments, anyone else?
So, you know, with what Ms. Lewis is saying, I mean, I, I agree with what she's saying. Um, and I've heard from, from various folks, you know, about this, and, and it's, everybody's got their own reasons on both sides. It seems to be pretty even. Um, but the one thing that I haven't heard too many people talk about, or one thing at least that I'm considering or looking at, is that I think if, if we can get that seat filled, one thing is it'll help prevent us from ending up in ties. Because the currently the way we're set up, you know, there's four, and you can end up, you can end up, you know, two-two, and then we're, we're coming back around again to vote, because something didn't make it that day. And, you know, we'd like to get things moving and, and at least get somewhere and get things voted on versus ended up in ties. I mean, we haven't been there yet, but that's one thing that I've been thinking about, so that's kind of my thought process there.
Uh, I could go on, but I, I think I agree anyways. Like, I, I think we should go August. I wanted the opportunity for people to convince, convince us that November was the right way to go. Um, I've asked a lot of people, and pretty much everybody, I've had, I think, three people say that they were for November. Every one of them said, well, I mail my vote in, but I wanna make sure that nobody else is disenfranchised. Nobody came to the meeting to say, so I'd have to say that I was, I'm not convinced, spend the extra thirty thousand dollars. And I think we should go with the August.
Myself, the only, and I think it's gonna be a low turnout to District One. If it's August, if it's November, it's probably gonna be a low turnout. I know in the past, when it's, you know, when you're not voting for a president, it all cuts voting almost down in half. And then a special election, we're gonna try to advertise it a lot through the city, if it's August, if it's November, uh, making sure people know about it. One part of me says maybe people are more used to voting in November, the first Tuesday in November. Would they, more chance of them voting? I just would hate to see a super-low turnout of two or three hundred people voting. That just, that bothers me. But I can't disagree with what anybody says up here. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
This Mayor, um, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion to, oh, it's item eight? Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion to consider, um, the option of August, the twenty-sixth, two thousand and five, for Resolution Number 6880, um, for the upcoming election for District One.
Okay, we have a motion and second is stated for Resolution Number 6880. Any questions, comments? I'm hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Okay, now we need everybody to get ready to vote in August. Okay. Next item's consideration of a Central California Alliance for Health, CCAH, Award Agreement and Budget Amendment. And with that, we'll go to Stacy.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Um, our Housing Program Manager, Kristy McCammon, will be giving the presentation on this item. We're really excited. Um, so this, um, agenda item, uh, number nine and number ten, um, we're going to speak, we're gonna take the resolution separately, but you'll see within the presentation that they actually go hand-in-hand. But Kristy will go through that, and here you go, Kristy, thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Hello, Mayor, I need a booster chair for this one. So as Ms. Susan Elms, uh, mentioned, we didn't wanna bore you with two presentations. So, uh, to be economic, we made it into one. So I want to first start with a bit of background information, uh, to level-set us. And because we have so many new family members, um, wanted to just give everyone an opportunity to understand, who is the Housing Division? What do we do? What is our scope? And why are we here tonight? So the City of Los Banos Housing Division, uh, purpose is to, um, take responsibility for developing a citywide system response to homelessness. We were founded in March of twenty-twenty-three, and the Housing Division consists of a Program Manager, myself, Kristy McCammon, and Outreach Coordinator, who is Jennifer Loa. We offer, in terms of our services, outreach and engagement, case management, housing navigation, and connection to services, income, education, benefits, healthcare, you name it. Case management is individualized for the person in front of us, um, and often begins with building rapport and trust and a relationship with that person, um, to gain an understanding and to also gain a little bit of trust, so that they will engage with us. Um, and sometimes that can take a, a while, depending on the participant. And then we have an administrative piece, um, that is really about identifying opportunities for grant funds, um, proposing legislation, um, lobbying, do, at, at the Washington D.C. Senate House sometimes, and really pushing forward for, um, for change and for initiatives that can help our city. Um, it also is part of our job to develop, look for any development opportunities for, um, housing and shelter. And I wanna be really clear, housing is long-term, permanent. Shelter, a temporary place for people experiencing homelessness, and that is within our scope as well. So, again, in terms of background, we wanted to give you an idea of the scope of the issue here in, in Los Banos. Um, our point-in-time count for last year was one hundred and forty-nine souls. Now, of those one hundred and forty-nine souls, twenty-eight of them were sheltered, but still considered homeless. Um, and the remainder were living in places not meant for human habitation. So on the street, in cars, um, that sort of environment. I wanna share with you that at the point that the anti-camping ordinance was adopted, we saw the population of unhoused people, um, come together in one location. And that gives us the impression that the population grew. But actually, we just completed the twenty-twenty-five pit count on January twenty-third. Thank you to Stacy for joining us for that. Um, and the preliminary results are in. Los Banos has reduced their unhoused population, um, for a couple of reasons. One is that we've been able to permanently house about twenty individuals. And when I say permanently housed, I mean, found them at least a one-year lease, sometimes longer. And part of our services includes, uh, post-housing case management for at least a year. That means each person that we permanently house, we visit each week. Um, sometimes that means sitting down to have a cup of coffee. Sometimes that means taking them for an errand, getting some cleaning supplies, talking about their case plan. And so through these efforts, um, of building trust, moving through case management, moving through housing navigation, we've been able to reduce the, the count of unhoused people. I know the optics may, uh, be a bit confusing, but again, we had some legislative change in our city, and that meant that everybody came together into one spot. The, um, final pit count, point-in-time count, will be published by the county, probably sometime in late spring. Uh, the preliminary numbers, though, are eighty-seven, um, unsheltered people and twenty sheltered people. So it's about a thirty-two percent reduction in, in our, um, unhoused community as a preliminary report. When the final report comes, it will be published, and I'd be glad to share it with everyone. Now we move on to the, um, agenda item for your review. And this is, uh, to accept a grant from the Central California Alliance for Health. This is a local, um, our county's Medi-Cal Managed Care Organization. So, um, they have a housing fund that we learned of. Um, typically, their grants are supplementary grants. So they are not intended to fund an entire project, uh, but to be a force multiplier for an existing project. Uh, when I learned of it, I thought it would be a perfect companion to our encampment resolution fund. And I thought, wouldn't it be wonderful if we could add eight more units at least, um, through this grant? Uh, Central California Alliance for Health saw it that way as well, and awarded us two-point-five million dollars. This will allow us to add eight units. Four of those units are two-bedroom, one-bath, and four of those units are three-bedroom, two-bath. And they will allow us to house families and households. We do have some, um, youth and, uh, minors who are counted in our unhoused, um, community. So we're extremely excited about the opportunity to permanently house households. Um, on July thirty-first, uh, Central California Alliance for Health awarded the funds in the amount of two-point-five million in, um, support, again, of the Encampment Resolution Fund Grant Project. Some of the details of the funds, it is two-point-five million dollars. The funds are for capital project expenditures only. That means no operating expenses, no staff, none, none of those expenses are eligible underneath this grant. But we do have the Encampment Resolution Grant, uh, Fund that, um, addresses those expenses. So this truly is just for the capital of adding those eight units. The timeline to, um, spend these funds is thirty-nine months from the date of the, um, letter of agreement execution. Uh, we're bringing this to you this evening to dovetail with the Encampment Resolution Fund deadlines, and we wanna make sure that we're compliant with all the expenditure and obligation timelines. So the recommendation is to authorize the City Manager to execute the Central California Alliance for Health agreement and approve a budget amendment, uh, for two-point-five million dollars. And thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Any questions?
Um, so that, that two-and-a-half million, all it gets is eight units? That's, that's like about three hundred thousand dollars per?
Um, and that includes, uh, development costs, so bringing utilities, that's all part of a, a capital project. And so, um, we took the complete budget of, uh, bringing water, sewer, electricity, the roads. We took a, a portion of all of, of those development costs and attributed it to, um, to the total cost to build the unit.
And those are in addition to the ones that are already going there, right?
Correct. The total project is fifty, uh, fifty-eight units. Fifty of the units are one-bedroom, one-bath, and then, of course, these eight units that are. and then, of course, these eight units which are larger.
Still seems so high, but the infrastructure already there. But I'd like to circle back to, you said, the number of the homeless encampments went down by like 32%.
It did, yeah. The preliminary report.
So, I need you to explain, because I get this from people right now. The optics of it is like, hey, that thing is just exploding.
Yes.
And, you know, we admit, and we had that conversation, I met with you and Stacy. And, you know, I sit there and I say, you know, I'm being told the number was, you know, from 149, now it's down, you know, going through that. And they gave me this look, and they're like, you've got to be kidding me. That doesn't make any sense, and that, you know, for them, optically, it doesn't matter. And so, you know, I mean, I don't know. How do you explain that? What's your take? I know what you guys told me, but I think they need to hear that as well.
Sure, sure.
To better understand that, because right now, I mean, we ask anybody out here, and I see Lamont, I could ask him, he's going to be like, there's no way. There's no way. I met with him, and that doesn't, I don't think he's buying that. So, how can that number be down, but it's just grown? Can you please explain that?
Sure. So, our unhoused community, of course, is in one area now. The anti-camping ordinance was effective, I believe, about two months ago, Stacy?
It was adopted December 20th, it went into effect January 20th, right? Acting chief, yes.
So, slowly, what our brothers, sisters, siblings in law enforcement did was invite people like, hey, you've got to be in this area. And it did take a few weeks, up to a month, to bring people from the outlying areas and into that central encampment area. I will say, we're very fortunate now that Jennifer and I have been here for about two years, and we know the community very well. And in fact, the point in time count is hosted by Merced County. And it's conducted nationally on the same day from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. You can go longer by special permission. We knew that we had some community members that would not engage with us, because it is very important to note that you cannot count a person in the point in time count unless there is a visual confirmation. The participant does not have to answer the survey questions in order for you to place them as part of the point in time count, but there must be a visual. That means in previous years, if people thought, well, I know Sue is in that tent, I'm just going to count her. We were actually counseled by Merced County and the Collaborative Applicant through the Continuum of Care last year, saying that is absolutely not allowed. It's not allowed by HUD, Housing Urban Development, and it's not allowed by our Continuum of Care. So, Jennifer and I, we know where everyone lives, and we knew that there were participants that were not coming to their tent and allowing us to do a visual. And so, we asked for special permission for the point in time count to be extended. It's conducted through software on our phones. They shut it down at around 8:30. We asked them to reopen it, because we knew there were more people. So, it could have been that the count was even lower, but Jennifer and I knew that that wasn't data with integrity. The encampments per person can sometimes be very large, and there can be a collection of things, perhaps giving the impression that there are more than one person living in any particular encampment. There might also be, and I know for sure now, we have two or three tents that are empty. And so, I think those might be factors that I can offer to you. And if there was a desire to conduct a recount, I'm sure we could go to the county and request that through a special process. I hope that answered your questions.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking for just the public to hear, you know, because I asked that same question, you know? It seems like it's grown, it's gotten big, it's, even since I got appointed. I mean, I'd say it's grown. And right now, just driving over here, I said, man, I think it's grew two more, I see, you know, more. And so, that's why I'm asking the question, because a lot of people are like, nah, that's, they're hearing you now, saying the numbers come down. I know they're going, no, there's no way. That's why I wanted you to explain that.
Sure, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
People that are going out, but I think, you know, we've got to do a better job, too, to get that back in order, because it's getting out of hand. And there's been some conversation with Mr. Breezy and, you know, things to get going there. And I think, get things cleaned up, and I think we got to do something different there. And I know the housing, that's more of a long-term deal, but like I said earlier, you know, but we have to do something now. We got to figure something out. I don't have the answer right now, but we have to figure something out.
I would love to share that we have other funding devoted towards shelter, and I'm working on a proposal. With the permanent supportive housing, we're also going to still need shelter. We have about 20 shelter beds within the city limits now. I would like to increase that. So, I'm working with the state on existing funding through the permanent local housing allocation. It's a longer story than I have time for tonight. But this is talking about standardized shelter through tiny shelters. And so, I share your concern, and I come to you with the proposal and a willingness to work.
Yeah, I definitely think we got to consider what was, you know, given to us earlier as far as, you know, other things, you know, what are we going to do? Help people feel safe and do that, that's the right thing to do?
That's right.
So, you know, if people are inquiring and looking for some answers, we got to get back to them. We got to, you know, come up with some solutions. I mean, look, obviously, you know, I could sit there and say, hey, you know, what if it was, you know, near me? Would I want that? Nobody does. That's just to be honest. You know, but they're human beings as well, so we got to do what's right. But we got to figure out what's the right thing to do and how to keep people safe. So, you know, I'm not sitting here telling people, I got that answer, but it's something that I think everybody up here knows, we have to work on that, as well as with you all as well, looking for your guidance as well. What can we do? So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to be totally clear, there's no budget in this for services?
That is correct.
But there's bandwidth in the other, in the?
That is correct.
Okay. I just want to be clear on that.
Thank you. No, thank you for that opportunity. The Encampment Resolution Fund came to council quite a while ago in October. So, that Encampment Resolution Fund gives us funding for services and for operating subsidies for a period of time up to three years. And then there's another financial plan after that with a regulatory agreement based or reported against the property, so that we're not just thinking about services even in the next, just for this next three years, but we've got a plan for 15, 30, and 55 years.
And adding these eight extra units with whatever it's going to be, 16, 30, something extra people is not going to overtax the staff that's going to be there?
No, we're right-sized, probably for even more. But when we went to the state with our grant application, I asked for the moon and the stars, and then they gave it to us. So, we were very happy about presenting something that was right-sized with contingency, not only in terms of staff as a resource, but in terms of finances. We wanted to make sure that we had contingency fund, because construction is fun, and you usually need a contingency fund, right, Joe?
So, can any of that money, that two and a half, could that be used to help with some of these other things? Whether it's fencing, whether it's cameras, whether it's other things to help, you know, keep our other citizens safe? Is there any way, is that money, is that? The way it seems government works, there are certain things, you get a fine, it's got to be spent on that one thing only.
Yes, and the alliance, $2.5 million is for capital costs only. Now, the letter of agreement doesn't have a definition to a very high specificity about what capital is. So, I would say, let's open up the conversation with alliance. The budget has been prepared and proposed. But like any budget, perhaps an amendment and a conversation with alliance. They're a wonderful partner to work with. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. So, pigging back on that, they haven't given you the criteria at this point as to what capital means?
They have, but not at very high specificity. So, the general definition of capital costs are basically the brick and the mortar.
On the ground, yeah.
Right, so I'm saying, I would just love to have the conversation to see if it could be extended. And I would invite your recommendations for what you would like to spend these funds on. And let's just give them a call.
So, a couple of questions here. You indicated that the three bedrooms would have two bathrooms, but on the report, it says it'll have one.
I know. Our developer is wonderful. He said, I think we can actually get two bathrooms on those three twos.
And there would be no additional cost to that? It's just?
No.
Okay.
No. We're very lucky to have the developer here this evening, Mr. Adam Cunor from Enavasis. Thank goodness.
Yes. In the report, there's a terminology, households/families. Families, I understand. Households is the definition that I want to make sure is clarified. Could that mean any combination of people that are not related to each other, living in the same place?
That's exactly right. That is a HUD, Housing and Urban Development Federal Agency definition. And a household, especially in terms of the Section 8 voucher program, a household can be assembled of any number of people that wish to be included in the household and do not need to be related biologically.
So, I'm hoping that we'll make sure that we have good matches of people that will be able to live together and keep the community behind them safe so that that doesn't become an issue or problem. In the funding source of this project, it indicates that non-alliance, which is not the $2.5 million, which is $11.8 million that we're getting from the state, and also, there's a city general fund of $101.3 million.
Oh, leveraged funds.
Is this?
Just, I just want to remind you, we're just floating on the $2.5 million.
Okay.
Money right now. Most of those questions are for the next reservation.
Well, that was in this report.
Oh, was in that, too?
Yeah, it was in the report.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. So, I just, I'm trying to find out if the leveraged funds, is the $2.5 million a match? Do we have to match that in some way?
We did, and the match is actually the encampment resolution funds. That's what we used as a match. The leveraged funds are for expenditures already in the city's budget, mostly for staff, so I'm leveraged. It's what we bring to the table and was part of our grant application for the Encampment Resolution Fund. It's essentially our promise that we are invested as well.
So, the general fund of $1.3 million is for city staffing?
City staffing and also, I'm so sorry, I didn't bring the Encampment Resolution Fund budget with me. I can get more details on exactly what was included in the $1.3, but I would hate to misspeak without the numbers in front of me.
It's just in this report for the project you're talking about now, so that's why I brought it up. Because I didn't, yeah, it's on page 126.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I don't have the, I thought you meant in the staff report.
Yep, it is the staff report.
I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me. So, I would prefer to look at exactly what budget lines were in the $1.3.
Okay. And, you know, just out of curiosity, I know that this grant is based on the fact that you have to be Medi-Cal eligible. Am I correct on that?
That is just for the units attached to the alliance grant.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
If I can abbreviate, Central California.
I'm not talking about the state grant, I'm talking about the alliance grant.
Right.
That's a qualification.
Yes.
Okay.
And so, the developer must comply with not only the terms of the Encampment Resolution Fund, but also the terms of the alliance agreement as well.
So, if you, I'm just pulling this one out. If you have a veteran that has insurance through the VA to get their services through them, would this, you know, exclude them from being able to have access to living in one of these projects?
So, the alliance?
Housing, I should say.
Sure. The letter of agreement with alliance has some contingencies about if those units are empty and we don't have an eligible participant to inhabit them, that they will not sit empty. We can have special permission to fill them with somebody else, but we have to make all reasonable efforts to make it available to an alliance, or not alliance member, I'm sorry, a Medi-Cal eligible member. If we had a veteran that needed a unit, hopefully, the one-bedroom, one-bath would fit the need. But even if it didn't, our housing navigation services of the Housing Division would, I mean, very diligently look for a different unit for that person, maybe not at one tree. We also work very closely with the VA in Merced County to identify rentals. They have landlord engagement efforts so that they can locate housing units as well. We would never want a veteran to be unhoused when we have units available.
And I'm going to make this assumption that if it's a veteran who has eligibility for medical through the VA, but is a family, it's a family, you know, could be a combination of husband and wife, children, or just the veteran and children. The children would, I don't think they would be eligible for veteran services, so they may be eligible for Medi-Cal and?
That's absolutely a possibility.
So, that would make them qualify.
Correct, yeah. It's nice with the alliance that you don't have to be an alliance member, because there are many people in our county who have Medi-Cal with alliance as their managed care organization. But there are some people who are only Medi-Cal, we call it open card, right? Just general Medi-Cal without a managed care organization. And alliance has made these units available to anyone that's Medi-Cal eligible. It does not have to be an alliance member, and we are very pleased with that.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Hey, real quick, so I know earlier they talked about, hey, we're going to be vetting people out, and if they, you know, if whatever, it's criminal records or whatever it is. But that, you can't do that with something like this, right? When you do grants and states and stuff like that. You're limited, you can't put certain stipulations, right? What are those exactly?
So, a lot of times, we model our criteria on the Section 8 code, federal regulation, so Section 8 voucher code. We use that as kind of a North Star, because we want to make sure we're compliant and we can get all the vouchers that we can. When we talk about who is eligible for these units at one tree, we have a few things to consider. One, our agreement with the state for the $11.8 million, we're going to call it IRF, if that's okay, Encampment Resolution Fund. So, we have to be mindful of that criteria. We also have to be mindful of the alliance criteria. In terms of criminal backgrounds, when we follow that Section 8 code, there are several criminal background profiles that are not eligible for a voucher. Therefore, we're just going to follow that exact criteria so that we stay at that North Star. It's very important also to note that the eligibility for one tree largely exists that it has to be people who are, right now, in the encampment or who were recently in the encampment. So, if we had somebody inside the encampment, and they're now in one of our shelter spaces, the state says, have the $11.8, but it has to resolve the encampment issue. And so, therefore, we must look for people who were in the encampment or recently in the encampment.
Yeah, so we can't say, you know, also, you have to pass a drug test to be able to go in there. We're not allowed to do that, correct?
So, you might be talking about harm reduction policies that we must follow, and that, and housing-first policies that we must follow. And those are grant requirements that we are not allowed to change. That means that there is no quid pro quo for services. So, I cannot mandate or put in criteria, for example, if I'm the client or resident. Nobody can put a requirement upon me that I go through drug treatment, that I go to church four hours a week, that I turn over my Cal fresh food benefits. There can be no quid pro quo for benefits and for services. That's part of a housing-first principle. It is a national guideline. It's also encompassed in Welfare and Institutions Code within the State of California. If we violate that, we could have to revert some of our funds back to the state. The state has already begun their first assessments, their IRF assessments. And with the governor's mandate on data with integrity and reporting. And with the governor's, um, uh, mandate on data with integrity and reporting, um, about two years ago, we wanted to see where our money was going and the efficacy of these programs. And so there will be audits. We must be very careful that we're following housing first principles. In addition, we're mandated to follow harm reduction principles. Um, that's a public health policy, and in a nutshell, um, we can, uh, we cannot, um, disclude somebody, exclude somebody if they are a person using drugs. I hope that helps.
Yep.
I can get long-winded about this, so sorry.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, before us, we have City Council Resolution 6881, authorizing the city manager execute the Central California Alliance for Health Agreement and approve a budget amendment. So what is the desire of the council?
So I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution, uh, 6881, authorizing the city manager execute the Central California Alliance for Health Agreement and approve a budget amendment.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? And here and any, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Now we're gonna move on to Item 10, Consideration of the Disposition Development and Loan Agreement and Related Instruments, including a regulatory agreement with Anabasis LLC for the One Tree Village Permanent Supportive Housing Project. And with that, we'll go back to Crystal.
Okay, here I am again.
It's all yours again.
Thank you, council members and mayor. Um, so I'd like to begin by, um, stating our need for One Tree. Uh, we're before you to, um, propose a project, and I just want to go to the root cause um, of the need so we can understand what it is that we're trying to solve. So the, the need for a project like One Tree really relates to systemic housing issues. So there's a lack of affordable housing and there's a lack of available housing. But there's also a lack of housing dedicated to unhoused people. Um, the housing navigation that Jennifer and I do is very challenging because many property owners, property management companies do not wish to rent to our participants. And I understand their concerns, and the state has also recognized this and the nation has recognized this. And so we need permanent supportive housing dedicated to unhoused people. I can tell you that for every 20 rental applications we put in, maybe we have one approval. We are very dedicated to landlord engagement, and Jennifer and I knock on doors and make relationships with landlords as much as we can. We've been able to permanently house those 20 people. But the rate at which we could house people, um, could be far exceeded by our current rate if we have housing dedicated for the unhoused. So the competition with community members who have favorable rental and income history is very high. And our unhoused community members' rental applications are usually denied, uh, and therefore people remain in encampments and in cars and on the streets. There are several people who are ready to be housed in the encampment now that actually have Section Eight vouchers in hand, and we just can't find a rental unit. Merced County Housing Authority gives you 90 days once the voucher, Section Eight voucher is in hand. And if you don't find a house or an apartment or a room to rent with that voucher, you have to revert it. It goes back in the system. That is heartbreaking, and we've had that happen. So right now, we have about three people with Section Eight vouchers in their hand, and we have about eight more people who are gonna be going through their orientation for Section Eight vouchers. Ms. Jennifer Loa processed about 15 Section Eight housing vouchers. We were awarded for the City of Los Banios through our advocacy at the Housing Authority. But these vouchers mean nothing if we do not have units to spend them on. And that's the beauty of a project like this. And that's why it was so important to seek the, um, seek the grants because we knew as a housing division, we could not help the city as much if we didn't have units.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
So, so, you know, it, it is bad if they're losing that Section Eight voucher, which then goes back in the system, which is not good. Do we do anything to help find and maybe, I mean, if, we don't, we're not ready for it, but why should they lose it? If we can assist them in finding where they can use that Section Eight voucher elsewhere, I don't know. But, I mean, just, I don't know, somewhere else where they might, and they got space for it. So these people can get into a home and not lose that voucher. Is that something we've explored or looked into at all?
You bet. So the vouchers that are issued by the Merced County Housing Voucher can only usually be used in the county. After a year of, um, a year of use, there is a portability, uh, provision in the administrative plan of the Housing Authority, and they could, what they call, port out to another area. Jennifer and I do housing navigation throughout the entire Merced County. Of the 20 people that we have permanently housed, almost 95% of them are in Merced and Atwater. None really essentially were housed here in the first year. All were housed in another area. We make our search as far and as wide as we can, um, so that we don't lose that voucher. Um, so we, we're just doing all that we can, but even in Merced and Atwater and all parts of Merced County, we generally have denied rental applications. And then we beg the Housing Authority to let us have more than 90 days. If there are extenuating circumstances, we can request that, but the criteria for that extension is very narrow. For example, was somebody incarcerated for a period of time? Were they in the hospital for a period of time? But those exceptions are rarely made, and we lose the voucher, and it's not for lack of trying.
Now I just want to make sure we're, we're exploring all options.
You got it, you got it.
You bet. Thank you. Camera one, camera two.
Yes.
Okay. So moving on, uh, the One Tree Pro, uh, Permanent Supportive Housing Project in a nutshell, we kinda talked about, sorry about that, uh, 50 one-bedroom, one-bathroom units, four two-bedroom, one-bath units, and, uh, four, um, three-bedroom, two-bath units. In addition, the project includes onsite offices for support services for property management. Uh, we have some beautiful, um, um, I'm sorry, preliminary conceptual, uh, graphics for you, both in your packet and also on display here so that you can get a feel for what the neighborhood will look, will look like, um, upon completion. And a little bit of background about the IRF award and project. Again, it was 11,842,621 dollars. Um, the IRF part of the award is funding the 50 units, um, as, as mentioned before, plus budget lines for the supportive services, staff, the operating subsidies. There's a small portion, um, for administrative costs, and those are really recovered costs for the city, um, for a three-year period. And as the, uh, budget breaks into lines, you'll see that overwhelmingly the budget goes to the people helping the people and for the actual capital costs. So we have nearly 1.5 million for onsite program manager, a property manager, two service coordinators, service coordinator is another way to say case manager, and a facility maintenance staff member. Uh, in addition, Jennifer and I will be at One Tree, um, quite a bit, uh, between there and hopefully if we get our shelter encampment off the ground, we really like to divide our time between those two places and to case management, um, uh, post-housing visits for not only the people at One Village, but also for the people that we've been able to house in other areas in the county. Um, as mentioned, the administrative cost, $580,000, that is for a three-year period. And we want to demonstrate that overwhelmingly the money is going, um, to staff and is going to the actual buildings. Very small amount for administrative costs, really just to restore the city's general fund for the investment that you made in us. The money comes with some timelines. The state requires 50% of all the fund, the IRF funds to be expended by June 30, 2025. Uh, we're on track to meet that deadline with no issue, but I've also been in talks with the state. Uh, the state was about six months late in delivering the 11.8 million dollars due to a reorganization that they accomplished. Um, they did not change any of these deadlines, even though they were six months off of their own deadline. This happens, we understand, but because of that, um, we've nego, we've been able to negotiate with the state that they be open to budget adjustments if we need to extend those deadlines. This is managed through Housing and Community Development, um, agency at the state. This is an agency that both Adam and I are very familiar with and have worked with for quite a few years, probably a decade or more between the two of us. And so we are familiar with the budget adjustment process. However, we are on track to meet these deadlines. Expended means check written and given, and then you can see 100% of the IRF funds need to be obligated, and that's what we're doing tonight. Obligation can be a loan agreement, purchase order, um, contract, letters of agreement, um, that sort of, um, written document. 100% of all the IRF funds must be expended by June 30th, 2027, and we've made a project plan that accomplishes the, um, compliance with that expenditure date. We're going into quite a bit of text here, so I'm just gonna try to put it in a nutshell for you. Um, now, even before we were awarded, uh, we, we had the power of positivity, and as we were making our grant applications, we knew from our, or I knew from my previous work in Merced County that we needed to get the procurement processes on the shelf. Because in these grant applications, if you don't have that infrastructure and you don't have that prerequisite work, it's very hard for them to award any grant. And so I began procurement processes such as a, a request for qualifications and a request for proposal so that we would have a developer lined up or developers. The request for qualifications was an open call. That meant there could be qualified bidders that can stay on a list. Um, this was a great example set by the City of Merced. My colleagues there shared their, their documents, um, and generously walked us through the, um, successful process that they had achieved. Um, but the request proposal really just looked for one awarded bidder. That, um, awarded bidder was Anabasis, and that is, um, led by the CEO, Adam Conore, who is here tonight. Um, and the next step was then to develop an agreement with the developer, not only for the construction, the development and the construction, but also, um, a developer that was willing to abide by regulatory agreement and that was willing to provide the services onsite. Um, and, uh, this agreement that you have before you this evening is the work of many, many hours and has been reviewed by our council and by, um, outsourced council, council who has expertise in affordable housing. Um, it's not an easy document to create, but we were very careful about it and, and very thoughtful about it and did not want to rush it. Um, the loan agreement provides for the disposition of approximately four acres of city-owned property. Um, the agreement also details a plan to provide through a forgivable loan the encampment resolution grant funds and the Alliance funds. Um, it includes the construction and all related work necessary to produce the 58 units. And in addition to the construction aspect of the project, Anabasis will provide supportive services to residents, um, for a period of no less than 55 years. And disposition of the property is authorized by and compliant with California Government Code Section 37364, which we had lessons about. Thank you, Bill. The regulatory agreement is also before you in your packets this evening. In addition to the DDLA, um, we have a regulatory agreement that is a restrictive covenant ensuring the property remains affordable for at least 55 years. And this is very important because the affordable housing is an absolutely essential need of our community, and we want to make sure it's preserved as such and that there is regulatory agreement, uh, recorded upon the property. This ensures affordable housing, um, for eligible households through rental and income restrictions for a period of 55 years after a certificate of completion is issued. And the developer, as mentioned, must comply with the Alliance agreement and with the IRF agreement, just as the City of L.B., Los Banios must as well. Camera one and camera two. The project site, uh, wanted to talk a little bit about how that was identified and where that is. During this last year, um, the city studied, um, city-owned par, parcels for their size, their location, their access to utilities and proximity to services. The state is very prescriptive about, um, awarding grants and your proximity to things like the bus line, to groceries, to the library, um, and other resources. Uh, the most feasible project site was determined to be located off of Gilbert Gonzalez Jr. Drive, and it's designated as High Density Residential, um, R3, which permits the project density required to facilitate the 58 units. And then on October 2nd, the city council directed staff to designate a portion of that parcel, not the entire parcel, just four acres. I believe the entire parcel is over eight acres, about 8.21, I think, is the size. Did I get that right? Oh, goodness gracious. Look at me go. Um, and that again will give us the, the 58 units. Um, we've included in your packet a conceptual project rendering, uh, of the site plan. Um, thank you, Mr. Conore, for, um, for providing this for us. As you can see, and I don't know if there's a pointer here, and, you know, we're not even gonna try. As you can see, uh, there is. Oh, that is wonderful. Thank you. So Gilbert Gonzalez Drive will, um, move across the top of the property line. Um, it will be a continuation of the existing road that's, uh, that is running across the Gilbert Gonzalez, um, apartment complex. Um, the units that border or that are, um, just below the, the new road are the two and three-bedroom units. You can see that there's green space available. You can also see that there's storage available for each unit. And so that gives residents an opportunity to store, and, and we would want to make very, very clear that like any property, um, the property management, um, Adams, under Adams' direction, if there is garbage, if there are belongings that are spread, it's, it's going to be managed just like any other residential neighborhood. So if things are not fitting inside their home, um, they have a little bit of storage. If things are not fitting inside their storage, we have ample, uh, garbage service within, within the community. You can also see that there's a pet area. There's a separate office for services. This is important. So if the residents have any needs whatsoever, the office with case managers is located on the property and will be staffed Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. There's also a separate building for property management. So this is just like any other complex or resi, rental residential area where you can meet with the property manager, fill out paperwork, ask questions. Jennifer and I will be delivering quite a few services in the office and working with our community partners, our faith-based partners and our, um, pub, uh, private sector partners in those buildings. There will be solar upon the parking lot, um, uh, carports? Is that what, how I would say, Adam? Um, and, and as mentioned, plenty of, of green space. There are more conceptual project renderings in the pages that follow. Um, I invite you to take a look at the pictures, both in your packet and here displayed for you inside. And Mr. Conore has, um, packets for each of you where you can see, um, pictures of the conceptual renderings. So just for the community, you can see that these are duplex modulators. One, uh, the one-bedroom, one-bath, there's one-bedroom, one-bath on one side, one-bedroom, one-bath on the other. This is conceptual landscaping. And another shot there of parking areas, houses, trees. Sorry, everybody didn't get a chance to look at those as much as they'd like. Please, if anybody has, um, a desire to see pictures up close, will be available, um, if that's allowed. Moving on to the sale of the city-owned surplus land. So the sale of the four acres of the land is for a nominal fee to the developer. It's a strategic and necessary investment in achieving the public benefits, um, that we seek. The land sale directly facilitates the project that serves that critical public need. And what we're doing is we're really leveraging the assets that we have so that we're not spending additional funds in acquiring other property, um, so that we can address homelessness in an effective and ethical use of the city's resources. We want to promote the well-being of the broader community with this project. This project also aligns with local and regional policy priorities to expand affordable housing, reduce homelessness- housing, reduce homelessness and promote inclusive growth. It also helps our city's requirement of the housing element and the regional housing needs allocation. So this really achieves many goals with one project, not the least of which is to have a compliant housing element, which will make us eligible for other grants and for other resources that our city needs. And I wanted to share with you a few successes to date and what the Housing Division has been able to do since we were, since we were born in March of 2023. So the two bridge homes, when I say bridge homes, those are our emergency shelter homes, two residential homes within the city limits who can shelter people experiencing homelessness. When Jennifer and I first came to work for the city of Los Baños, we noticed that those occupancy rates were really high, and we did not understand why. And so instead of making a snap decision, we did a little listening tour. We sought to understand why. Was this a blip in the radar? Was this a systemic problem? So we collected data and we talked to people and we listened. And what we learned from those listening tours and from collecting that data, we then went to the contractor who manages and operates these bridge homes. And because of the good relationship that we had with Mission Merced, they listened because they were not aware of maybe all of the issues. And together, within a few months, we were able to get the occupancy, I'm sorry, the vacancy rate was very high. The occupancy rate rose to 100%. It has been 100% for at least a year and a half now. We keep those beds full, and that's wonderful, and also, gosh shucks, because we need more shelter. And so we're developing that plan now. 14 individuals is actually 20 individuals now. I need to update this slide. Some of those are households and some of those are individuals. Mentioned that we do the weekly in-home visits performed to sustain housing. Once folks are housed, it's just the beginning sometimes. We have approximately, well, we had approximately 130 individuals on our caseload, and that went down quite a bit because of the people that we housed. When we say caseload, we mean outreach and engagement on the street and inside our bridge homes. So we're at about 100-ish at this point. It's still a really high caseload, given that I can only help with case management about 50, maybe sometimes even 30% of the time. Most of this caseload falls upon our one outreach coordinator, and so that's why we leverage the other community services. We've had over 5,000 separate outreach occurrences since March of 2023. An outreach occurrence is helping somebody with a birth certificate application, helping somebody acquire food, helping somebody get to a medical appointment. Of course, we were awarded the 11.8 in IRF and the 2.5 in Alliance. We've been able to facilitate community provider training. We hosted a substance use symposium, and that meant that we needed to understand, how do we get treatment for people? Because there are many people asking for substance use treatment, and we were not finding resources. And so Jennifer and I invited everybody in Merced County that we could find that provided treatment for substance use. And we gave them 12 questions and hosted a symposium so that we could learn, what are you doing now? What are the access pathways? Please work with us. From that symposium grew a lot of interest in meeting each quarter. And because of those partnerships, I'm really proud to say that our local AAGES substance use treatment provider here in Los Baños has expanded their services. Before we joined forces, we had to drive people that wanted treatment to Merced, sometimes five days a week. That's, you know, very prohibitive and not a good use of resources. So we lobbied medical directors, we called anybody that who would listen, and we were able to get AAGES to expand their services. And now we just have to either, they get themselves to treatment each day or each week. And now we're working with Golden Valley Health Centers, Sutter and Dignity to bring substance use treatment tent-side. And Doctors Diem and the medical director from Sutter and Dignity are all working with us to make that happen now. It was really part of that original symposium. We still meet each quarter and we talk about developments. That also created another opportunity with our local hospital. Our local hospital is working with county mental health to develop the county's first inpatient medical detox center. And the city of Los Baños through the Housing Division is doing everything we can to support that, including hosting more symposiums and doing anything that we can do to bring that to fruition. We've connected over 75 people to food through CalFresh, through Medi-Cal and Vital Records. And we developed health partnerships for street medicine because there is definitely a correlation between healthcare and people being housed. And that's what the whole CalAe new Medi-Cal initiative is about. We know if people are connected to healthcare, it's much easier to engage with them. They can engage in their own case management, and that link to housing can be tighter. So our staff recommendation this evening, adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the disposition, development and loan agreement and related instruments, including that regulatory agreement with Anabasis. And if there are any minor or conforming or clarifying changes consistent with the terms, that that could be approved by the city manager or designee in consultation with the city attorney prior to executing for the One Tree Village permanent supportive housing project and adopt a resolution declaring pursuant to Government Code Section 54221 that the real property owned by the city is exempt surplus land. We've worked with the state on that exemption and have their support on that as well so that we could bring it to you with that already vetted. That concludes my presentation. Thank you so much.
Adam, you want to get up and say, you heard all that. I don't want to put you on the spot.
Mayor, council, staff, good evening. Thank you for your time. I appreciate being here. My name is Adam Connor. I'm the CEO of Anabasis. We're a service-disabled veteran on small business. I myself am a Global War on Terror veteran. And we were born out of a desire to house veterans and help veterans. I took over Veterans of Foreign Wars post 7792 early into COVID in 2020. And that's when we really hit the ground running, got into encampments, started helping. I tried to build two projects, and I was like, I have no idea what I'm doing. So I applied to and I got into UCLA's Affordable Housing Development Program, and I finished that in November of '22. Forged a lot of great relationships and partnerships on this project. We've got, I mean, quite the list. API Architecture, Benchmark Engineering, the Merced Rescue Mission, Cavco Homes, Lawler Escavations, Alliance for Health, the City of Los Banes, Enhanced Care Management and Anabasis. So we've got, in aggregate, a very experienced, very competent team to address the issue of housing and to try to help the residents of Los Banes. I wanted to bring up a couple of points about management, right? And the issues that we see when it comes to whether it's a large multifamily property or a bridge house. There's various Merced Rescue Mission bridge houses you can drive down the street and you don't even know that it's a Merced Rescue Mission bridge house. The homes next door and across the street sell for the same prices as homes one street over because it's clean, it's properly managed, and it's done well. And that's what we seek to do. We seek to work hand-in-hand with law enforcement, have direct video feeds to the department and be able to address issues. To address Councilmember Chavez's question earlier, there is some discretion when residents come to us from the coordinated entry system. Kind of the two main reasons that we would not accept a resident is 290 or a history of violent assault or something. We don't want our residents at harm, we don't want our neighbors at harm, and we don't want our staff onsite at harm. I recently, earlier today when I got here, I got to have a great conversation with Mrs. Lewis from the Retro Mobile Home Park. We've exchanged contact information. I'm going to go sit down with them personally, and we're going to identify major points, major strike points, so we make sure that we're working hand-in-hand and not working against each other. Surveillance. Yes, I think that's pretty much all I have.
You have development in Merced, correct?
Yeah, well, I have two projects, Mayor in Merced, I'm working on right now. Our street will be done in about 90 days.
The other one, is it McKee and Yosemite?
I have one at 125 East 13th Street and one at 73 South R Street. I also own, I'm owner-operator of some multifamily property in Atwater as well.
Any of these, like tiny homes, operating at this time?
The tiny homes aren't, well, I'm remiss to call these tiny homes, right? Our one-bedroom units here are 407 square feet. Our two-bedroom units are 547, something like that. These aren't really tiny homes, they're apartments. They're decent, not huge, decent-sized apartments. None of my original Home Key projects are operating yet, but our team does have a lot of development experience and has completed several affordable housing projects that are operating.
Definitely looks like you know what you're doing.
I try.
I'm glad you're going to talk with Ms. Lewis. I think that's, communication is where it's at. So those people have been through their share and a lot more than what's deserved of them over the last few years. And this council just wants to make sure this project, and it looks like you're the man to do it, along with our staff, to get this going off the ground and being good for the citizens around it and the city too. So I'm glad to hear all that. I really appreciate that.
Yes, sir. We appreciate the opportunity. Ms. Lewis will have my direct contact information if there's any issues now or 36 months from now, we'll respond accordingly.
Very nice. Any questions from Council?
Well, I'm not sure if he can answer these questions and maybe staff can. When it comes, I see there's money in here for landscaping and various things in the Attachment III for the budget of this project. And under supportive services, there's like $1.4 million, almost $1.5. How long is that supposed to last?
That is a 36-month budget for operational costs. That includes case management, some utility expenses. I'd have to read the whole budget to tell you what they all are, but it's not a very long-term, council member, because the goal of every single time you do one of these developments is from the beginning. You start working with your residents to convert them to long-term subsidies, such as tenant-based vouchers and project-based vouchers. So that operational period is just to give you a buffer so that you can build the operational capacity of the project on its own. And so when those lapse, you have the finances needed. One of the things we're doing right now is putting 180 kilowatts of solar on this property because without that, there's about a $90,000 a year underpaid utility expense. And if you do the math on what PG&E increases are on an annual basis, pretty soon we'd be paying a quarter million dollars a year for power, we wouldn't be able to afford it. So things like that are going to allow the operational viability to be long-term.
So after the 36 months, and especially if you're moving residents in and out of the facility and you have people that are coming in that haven't adjusted to the program itself, what services are they going to have on a long-term basis?
So there's long-term county services, such as BHRS Health Services that will exist for perpetuity. There's long-term services the residents are eligible for through the Managed Care Plan. A decent amount of our residents, depending on how many veterans we have, will have VA social work and VA healthcare for perpetuity. And then there will be a supplemental case management service carried out through the Merced Rescue Mission that'll be onsite to pick up any gaps in that.
So those three buildings that you're building for the office and services and such, if it's only going to be for a duration of time, what will happen to those buildings?
No, no, those will be forever. For perpetuity, we will have case management offices and leasing office.
And they will be onsite?
There will be someone onsite, yes.
Now, I see in here there's a contingency of $473,000 for the construction. And just out of curiosity, you know, I don't know how your projects are going in Merced, but what if something happens and this money runs out? Who's responsible? Is the city responsible for the remainder of the money? Is the state?
No, no, so as the developer, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Councilmember, I apologize. As the developer, there's always kind of a possibility that you're going to have some permanent debt placed on any project. So for example, if we're getting close to completion and we said, we have $700,000 in change orders, we don't have funding for it, it's my responsibility to then go get like a HUD 4 loan or other financing to put a permanent loan on the project and use that money to complete it. And I just have to make sure that the project can operationally support the debt service on that permanent loan.
And is there, boy, there were a lot of pages here. I couldn't read through the whole thing, but is there a date certain? Once these funds, we meet all the fund dates, is there a date certain that this project has to be completed?
There are, they're in the IRF timeline right now. As Christie said, those are somewhat flexible just based on the delays that we've seen from HCD. But given the nature of these modular units coming from Cavco, we're pretty confident that we can complete site work undergrounds, wet and dry utilities, and get these units placed pretty quickly and not have a six-month period of vertical construction that would stretch out this completion date.
And also for landscaping, I'm not sure how this falls under if it's, you know, residential is different, we don't govern that, but commercial we do about if landscape dies, that it has to be replaced. How does that work for this project?
So this project will, sorry, Adam, I'm going to jump in. So this project will still have to go through the entitlement process with Planning Commission, where there will be conditions of approval, just like any other development. And we treat this like a multifamily development, and it would have conditions, just like our standard, that would require a maintenance agreement with Public Works and the replacement conditions of approval that we would require of other projects.
And we will award a service contract for landscaping, so if there's any issues that arrive, we'll just call that point of contact and get it rectified quickly.
Just to make sure I didn't have any notes written down. The masonry wall. Has there been some decision on that at this point? Because I think there's going to be one that is going to be at the southern end of the horseshoe coming in for the facility, but I know that the residents are concerned about an additional masonry wall, and I had spoken to staff about that as well, where the chain link fence is, to give them that added sense of protection.
So I didn't want to step on Christie's toes, but I'm 100% confident we can use some of our capital dollars from Alliance to help fund that wall, so we fully intend to meet those requests.
And that'll be part of the conditions for the contract?
I think the current, I'm sorry. I think the current loan and disposition development agreement states that it has to be done to our specifications. I know, I'm very short. And so while that agreement might not get as specific as each item, it has to be built to our specifications, so.
I just don't want, I don't want to see us have something stated verbally here and then it's not carried through, because I've seen that happen.
And we do also have the opportunity, as mentioned in the recommendation, to make small changes to the language, and Adam is very amenable to.
If the language wasn't there, I would build the wall.
Okay, so is there any way that we can make that a part of the condition tonight?
I would defer that, please, to the Planning Commission, and we would provide that within the entitlements as a condition of approval.
That's fine. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
You mentioned surveillance, I just wanted to ask about cameras.
Yes, so we fully intend, I'm not sure, I got to talk to PD, but in Merced, we can directly feed our surveillance footage to the police department. And that comes in handy because a lot of the calls for service that we're seeing from Home Key-type projects in Merced is like someone's having an episode and they're freaking out. For example, one person like called 911 and they're like, there's someone on my roof with a gun. Well, no one was on the roof with a gun. A case manager just had to go knock on their door and say, sir, calm down, he went to sleep, everything's fine. But if PD doesn't have access to the feeds and can't see that, then there's a call for service and there's a cost. So I definitely want to have our surveillance directly feed so that we can work through issues that don't require a call for service.
So it's cloud-based surveillance that you're doing?
However, however, we have to, I'm not a security consultant, but however, we need to do it all, I'll make sure it's done.
I've been involved in some of these projects on the technology side of things. So that's why I ask. So this is, you have surveillance covering the whole facility too?
Yes.
You gave two addresses, 125 East 13th Street and 175 R Street in Merced.
125 East 13th Street and 73 South R Street.
73?
South R Street, yeah. And I just recently took over 50% ownership of the 73 South R Street project because the developer was a million dollars behind and 12 months behind schedule, and so I came in and I'm working with the city and I'm fixing it and delivering it.
Are they anywhere in the condition of, I mean, are the capital projects on the ground now?
Yeah, we're just about to start grading on 125 East 13th Street, but 73 South R Street is almost 90% completed. If you'd like to come see that project, I'd love to have you out. If you'd like to come see that project, I'd love to have you out. And that is a different product, it was made out of shipping containers, which I never would have done if I had controlled it in the first place.
I think I heard about that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, everyone.
Any other questions? Okay, let's get to work. First item, Resolution Number 6882, authorizing... Oh, okay. Yes, we do have some letters. So go ahead, Lucy, you want to?
Okay, the, "Good afternoon, Ms. Maloney. Would you please be so kind to read this email during the City Council meeting this evening? I appreciate it, thanks." "Good evening, City Council members. My name is Casey Miller and I am the Park Opera Reader of the Rancho Las Vanas Mobile Home Park. Some of you are very familiar with our park and others as new to their position and may not know the turmoil our entire park endured for the three years the City of Las Vanas housed the homeless behind our park. Between the constant trespassing crime, vandalism, drugs, abuse, violence, noise, vermin and fires, it was absolute hell for our residents. I understand that the tiny home project is moving forward and although I'm absolutely hoping for its success, I am a realist and am more concerned that our park will be expected to endure more torture. Since the City of Las Vanas elected to place the project in the same place where all the problems were, I expect the city to make sure our park and our residents are safe. So I would like to know what exactly is going to be done to protect our park and our residents. I reached out to Christie McCammond on October 8, 2024, and October 9, 2024, by leaving her voicemails asking her to contact me immediately as I had many concerns about the project. To date, I have yet to hear from her, that is not a good start. Deborah Lewis did suggest that we could install a gate at our property entrance. While we understand the desire to enhance security or privacy, it is important to note that such an installation would incur additional costs. The financial impact of that project would need to be accounted for and as a result, it would affect the overall property expenses. To maintain the balance between operational costs and profitability, the additional expense of installing and maintaining a gate would have to be passed on to tenants in the form of rent increase. Our management team works incredibly hard to keep our expenditures under control so we can offer affordable space rent to everyone in our community. And we all know that California really struggles with any kind of affordable rent. My concern is that a rent increase to cover this project would place a significant strain on my tenants. Many of them might not be able to afford the new rent, which would leave them in a situation similar to the residents of the tiny homes community, facing financial hardship and potentially having to move. This is not a reasonable solution. So would somebody please contact me with specific details as to what the city is going to do to ensure our well being, safety and peace of mind? Thank you for your time, Casey Miller." A second letter from Melissa Homan. "Dearest City Council and Mayor, Hi, Melissa Homan in District 2. I live right by Rancho Mobile and the San Gabriel Apartments, where the tiny homes are being considered. I think it's wonderful we received this grant for tiny homes, which I'm a big advocate for. I'm totally fine with the homes being there, but I have one question concern. Will we be running background checks on those receiving the tiny homes, ensuring no sex offenders and violent crime offenders won't be allowed? The apartments I live in between Starbucks and La Plaza Inn and San Gabriel Apartments have a lot of children. I personally would not be comfortable with anyone that has a violent record so close by, especially if they are on the sex offender list. Also, speaking of Starbucks, Deborah mentioned last meeting that Starbucks only painted their portion of the wall and it looks really bad. I agree, it looks tacky and they should paint the entire wall. Another issue with that Starbucks, they initially did not put light shades on the lights. The other side of that wall are my apartments, which are two story condo style. I have complained because at night it was bright light shining in my window. The shades went up and it's improved, but the lights are still pretty bright. All of our bedroom windows are upstairs lined up with the lights. The light shouldn't have been made so tall. It's almost like no one considered people live on the other side of the wall. Thank you for listening and thank you, Lucy, for reading, Alyssa Homan." And that's all the comments I have."
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this project before we take action? Please come for it.
Good evening, my name is Gabriel Gonzalez. The question that I did have regarding the tiny homes is I'm a retired construction worker and I've looked at a lot of tiny homes. A young man stated that there was another project that was made out of shipping containers. If you go online, any one of us go online right now, you can find a very nice, very affordable tiny home for under $8,000. My concern is 53 or 58, the amount of homes, tiny homes, that this whole project is about and money. I mean, as a former construction worker and a union worker, it's extremely, extremely expensive to build versus if these homes were modular, whether they were a storage container or a prefabbed home. You're talking about saving millions of dollars. I did a calculation, if you bear with me for a second, and the cost of 58 homes at $8,000 apiece is $464,000. We're talking about money here that whether it's the state of California or the city of Los Baños, that money's got to come from somewhere, right? And everyone here has expressed concerns about what ifs. And my main concern is, hey, we can have something similar to this, because I'm all for housing and helping homeless people. I'm a big fan of all of that. My main thing is the cost, because eventually, how would you say that? Eventually it's going to catch up to us, whether it's in maintenance fees. Deborah had mentioned something about landscaping. This young man's talking about awarding a contractor a contract to do that. All of these fees are going to be compounded, whether it's during the course of the year or over the course of time. But that was just my main concern. There are alternatives to helping our homeless people without spending so much money. That's it.
Counsel, my only concern about the tiny home project is actually the developer with the lack of history of being able to provide this project to fruition. Been doing a little homework, checking out other organizations that have been doing the same thing, stomping around in the bay. Developer there doing 26 projects that are completed and operational. My only concern is, is that the boots on the ground have yet to get on the ground with any of the other two projects this firm has done. Just wanting to make sure that we're making the right decision with the right development team. Thanks.
Mike, Mike? I never turn off my mic. Anyway, so you have any comments? I know we do have, people have concerns, legit concerns.
Absolutely.
And we have a lot of protection in our contracts, so maybe you should talk on that.
Absolutely. Mr. Vaughn, please redirect me if I'm going out of bounds here. But yes, there are a lot of what we call kind of clawbacks is the terminology used with council. So that if at any point the deliverables aren't delivered, we can restore the city's investment. With the regulatory agreement being recorded upon the property, the concerns about services and the concerns about the management of the property, that risk is mitigated. Throughout the entire process of developing these documents, risk assessment was done over and over and over. Like I said, it took several months to develop this agreement. It wasn't something that we were going to take a template of or, you know, skip any spaces about. And so those guarantees are written into the agreement. You know, the developer is well aware. I will say that when we conduct a procurement process like a request for qualifications and a request for proposal, we can only consider bidders that provide their proposal. And so before we posted both the RFQ and the RFP, we did outreach to affordable housing developers. I also attended at the state level a Home Key Conference so that I could meet small scale, large scale and everything in between developers who are creating Home Key type projects and IRF type projects. And so extensive research was done into how to procure and how to outreach to developers. And double and triple that time was taken to develop the agreement. If I may, we also have already in process some good neighbor meetings happening. I just want to apologize if I missed a phone call, I'm so sorry. We paid a visit to Rancho in person, I believe it was October 7. And I think we missed Casey, do I have that right? Chandra? Casey, thank you. We missed Casey at that time. We were also going through a move from one building to another. I sincerely apologize that we missed that phone call and I will absolutely make sure that we answer any question. With these projects that I've been involved with, both in Merced County and other counties, we create good neighborhood committees. And that means anybody that would like to join, even if you're not in the vicinity of the project, we meet on a regular basis. And that good neighborhood committee has a voice and the people of the community have a voice so that we can address along the way and be proactive in our ambition to make a cohesive neighborhood. And I just want to apologize on record for missing that phone call. You're welcome.
Did you have a question? Okay, so anything else? Oh, sure, sure.
So I was just talking about Anabasis's projects and I should have clarified that our development team consists of four individuals. Our in-house construction manager has 16 years of completed construction projects. Our in-house project manager has something like six Litex tax credit developments under her belt. And then the other principal of Anabasis has various retail projects that have been completed. So I'm sorry that I didn't clarify that properly.
Thank you. Okay, just before we take any action, we stand by our word and we will protect the residents around this. And I think this is being done in a very proactive way that we're going to work together and get this project done. So what's the council would like to do? So before us, we have Resolution 6882 and Resolution 6883. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve 6884 as a first one?
Yes, 6882. Okay, we have a motion, second? I'll second it. So we have a motion to second discussion. Okay, with that, I'll call for a vote. So all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have two ayes, one opposed and one abstained. So with that, Mr. Vaughn? The reason for the abstains?
My reason is I'm still not sure that this pencil's out for a city. And with one gentleman coming forward, and I've been to Fresno Home Shows year after year after year and I see tiny homes there that are already prefabbed and built and ready to sit on the ground. And I'm just wondering if we can save some money and possibly do something else. I know this money is specifically dedicated for this project, but if that means that, you know, we could put more homes on the ground rather than just doing a concrete slab and building from the ground up, I'm just concerned about that.
I might have some helpful information. So in order for these homes to be eligible for Section 8 vouchers, they must meet housing quality standards of HUD. And so when we talk about tiny homes that maybe you and I might enjoy, this is a bit different than what we have to build in order to be at housing quality standards. Most of, we're hoping for project based vouchers for this project and definitely for housing choice vouchers. So that housing quality standard makes a difference. Also, keep in mind, the price per unit isn't just for the unit. It's for all the development. That money is also a portion of it for the services, for the operating subsidies. So if you simply take the 11.8 and the 2.5 and you divide it, you know, by 58, it doesn't give you a true representation of the math of the project. Because in that budget, of course, is administrative costs to restore the city's investment. It is for costs of paying the staff and the services on site.
And I understand that. But is HUD requirement different depending on what kind of grant you get? I would assume that it's the same no matter what.
So the housing quality standards are standard for the nation and for anybody that holds a Section 8 voucher.
And the reason I'm questioning is because I've seen tiny home projects in San Jose and they're prefabbed. They're not.
I believe these are prefabbed.
And that's where I think there's a disconnect. They are prefabbed, these are prefabricated and that's how this project will be able to stand up so quickly, actually, is that it is prefabbed. This will not be concrete, you know, or tilt up or any type of stick tilt up. This is prefabricated. The units will be delivered on site, I'm sure Adam can speak to that, but they're prefabricated modular. It's actually on one of the slides and we felt it was redundant. And I'm sorry, Christie, we took that language out because we had said modular, you know, 50 units, modular, four units. But they're a modular prefabricated units. And we're trying to build this as quickly as we can within the timelines and the constraints that are within the grant, but also as efficiently as we can as well with the amount of money that we have. So we've done a lot of research, as Christie has stated. And we've looked also at models of other cities and what they're doing, especially Merced. They're ahead of the affordable housing process in the City of Las Vanas and a great model for us to be able to utilize.
So in the presentation, you know, the outline that was given to us, I think part of the agreement was that it could be anywhere from six to eight units. That's what I read in here somewhere.
That was our original grant application with the Alliance and we were happy, once we worked with Adam, to provide eight instead of the six. to provide eight instead of the six.
So again, if we run into financial difficulty and, you know, we've got eight in the contract and this program is expecting that and we can't meet it, we can only meet six. I mean, how, these are the fine details that disturb me. You know, because I don't want to get our city into any financial problems. We've still got to figure out where we're sitting at this particular point.
Councilmember, we have built a robust contingency into this project just based on the operational subsidies we have initially from the IRF budget. There's more than a guaranteed viability. I understand these units look expensive. We're something like 30% cheaper than hotel renovation projects per unit. And we're something like 50% cheaper than tax credit development projects per unit. So the opportunity that we have now to deliver this many units of housing at the price that they are per unit is not only competitive, it's kind of exceeding the standard, if you will, for a lot of forms of affordable housing development.
So what is the percentage of your contingency?
I'd have to pull the actual budget up. It's something like, yeah, it's 10%. We've got a healthy contingency. And then, as I mentioned before, if there was some need for an additional contingency, that would come as permanent debt that I guarantee and is placed on my property and not the responsibility of the city.
Is that in the contract, Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, it is. Mike, are you finished? What about the state monies that are coming down? What's the timeframe of that? That, you know, when it has to be used by, when it has... You said except, was it the June date? Was that it?
By June 30th of 2025, 50% must be expended.
Expended.
And then by, oh, I'm sorry. Let me go back to...
No, you don't. That's expended on by June. That's what I...
June 30th of 2027, all funds must be expended. However, for those services, because there was that six-month delay in when we received the funds, they are stating that they will consider budget adjustments that let us expend past the three-year period, especially when it comes to those services. So we don't lose any opportunity to provide those services because construction had to be delayed with no fault of our own. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Melissa, did you have?
No, I, again, that's my biggest concern is the construction costs versus what we've gotten in grants. And of course, Christie, you indicated earlier that he thinks he can get an extra bedroom in one of the three-bedroom units. So...
Extra, no, extra bathroom.
An extra bathroom, I'm sorry, extra bathroom into a three-bedroom unit. I don't, you know, if this is prefabbed, then how does, you know, how does this happen? If it's already designated that it's going to be three bedrooms, there'll be one bathroom in there. You know, there has to be some additional cost to do that.
Councilmember, the number we delivered is because we received real quotes from Cavco. And the three-bedroom, two-bath unit that they deliver was within our proposed budget. So it already met budgetary guidelines. We're not guessing that we can fit it in. It's 100% within the budget. And that's the unit we selected because we had the ability to deliver the resident two bathrooms instead of one.
In our original proposal, we didn't want to overpromise and underdeliver. This was a pleasant bid surprise. But we wanted to be very conservative and very careful.
Are you reconsidering your vote, Melissa? Before I move on?
Yeah. Maybe I'd like to hear from Adam. I don't know if he has to give a reason for his no vote. And certainly on my abstaining, I guess Mr. Vaughn felt that I needed to, so, or maybe it's required.
I was wondering if you had a conflict or something?
No, no conflict. It was just really the dollar bottom line and are we going to be able to see this project through to the deadline? And that, you know, again, our residents who are living near there, you know, Evan and I met with them and we tried to assure them that the city was going to protect them and they would not be traumatized. And I know there's, you know, a lot of state law regarding who you cannot deny to be in there. And is that going to be enough to make these residents feel okay? And also assuring that there's staff. As long as this project's there, is there going to be staff there on the 24-hour clock like there is the first three years of the money that's in this project? And, you know, I just need some assurance on that because this is a big step for us here in our community.
I think the alternative, though, if we don't make the step, is that we're faced with what we're seeing.
I understand that. But we have an obligation to the residents here in Los Banas. We can't just say, this is the alternative if we don't do it. We have residents who are taxpayers who deserve protecting in this community. And that's a big issue for me.
Councilmember, if I may, I work with, I work at the Navigation Center with the Merced Rescue Mission. I'm there for a monthly meeting with the team. And we're talking about kind of the most unstabilized population because they're coming into the NAV fresh off the streets with fresh mental issues and addiction issues. And the ability that the Merced Rescue Mission has to stabilize them and keep that place safe and protect...
But that's Merced. We're in Los Banas.
Yeah, we're bringing the same exact management entity to this project. So I'm saying that the competency within that organization to ensure that the residents of Los Banas are protected is very high.
But see, you also, you have a situation where you can't deny people because they're on drugs. You know, if someone is offered mental health treatment, because that's all the state of California does now. It offers treatment. It doesn't mandate people who have seriously mentally ill problems to be in treatment as it did in years past, when I used to work in the industry. So that's why, you know, I'm sitting up here trying to sort out what's going to be best for the residents who are living there versus our community that's already here and the fears that they have. And it would be the same no matter where we would build one of these projects in our city. So you can't deny them because they're using drugs. I still don't know, you know, the criteria of the type of people that you can deny. And I'm hearing people say sex offenders, you know. Can you identify under the code what type of people that are not going to be allowed in this facility? In this tiny house project?
So in Section 8 Code, it is sex offenses and methamphetamine production. Other violent offenses, they can, the Housing Authority can deny. So under the Section 8 Code, those two categories are for sure prohibited.
Is there a list that the Housing Authority has provided to staff?
Yes, it's in the administrative plan of the Housing Authority.
That should have been in this packet tonight.
Oh, sure. We can provide that.
Yeah. But see, we have to make a decision tonight. I'm saying that information should have been provided to us. So it gives us another leverage of deciding whether or not this is an appropriate project for the community of Los Banas.
Understood.
Yeah. So, you know, production of methamphetamines, that means you're manufacturing it. But, you know, sex offenders, felonies that have been committed in the past that people may have served prison sentences for, such as homicide or, you know, serious felonies. You know, I need to know what type of... And I'm not saying that people don't deserve a second chance. Believe me, I'm not saying that. But you can have someone that's a multiple offender time after time again, and it's felonious. And are we going to allow those people to be housed in this facility, in these facilities or housing project?
As I mentioned earlier, we still have discretion through the coordinated entry system. So as part of the approvals of this project, if the city wants to place some additional earnest, as long as that additional earnest doesn't violate California state law, we are very much on board with having rules and regulations that protect the residents of the city outside of this project.
So, Mr. Vaughn, outside of state law, which we have to follow, is there anything, any other restrictions that we could put on this project in regards to other residents who would be living there to protect the citizens?
You have to give me some examples of what restrictions you're...
Well, apparently, there's a whole list of...
Your restrictions can't be discriminatory. You've already been told that the restrictions have to be in line with the funding that's going into the project.
And there's the HUD, the HUD restrictions. And that's the bottom line, you know. Once the project's built out, who gets to live there? I don't know what the HUD restrictions are because they're not before us tonight. And that should have been an option for the council to be even considered.
If we were talking about any other population within the city, we wouldn't be asking who the owner of the apartments were going to accept or not accept in their lease agreement. I feel like we're treating the unhoused population in Los Banas like they're...
No, you're wrong. Because an owner of an apartment has their own vetting process.
Yes, and we still do. When residents come from the CS...
So all I'm saying is that we, as a council, should have been privy to what the vetting processes would have been regarding, you know, Section 8 or any other ordinance or laws that are out there that we have to look at. So it's clear to us, you know, we are sitting here as a council telling the public that we want to be transparent. And to me, this is a big transparency issue as to the safety of the community and the residents who will be living there.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I am not against people who are homeless or who have drug problems or anything like that to have the opportunity to be in a shelter. But not everybody who is homeless can be managed in shelter.
Yes, ma'am.
And so my issue is, you know, what are the criterias for that to happen?
In the DDA, there's a timeline on deliverables. One of those is tenant selection. So we have to submit a plan to the city that is approved by the city. I don't know, that goes to council, correct? So we have to submit a tenant selection plan that you approve, that, again, abiding by state law, you approve as far as the rules and regulations on who we're going to accept and who we're not going to accept.
I would also mention that inside your packet is the encampment resolution fund standard agreement between the city and the state.
Yeah, I saw that. It was about dollar amount.
The criteria or eligibility that we really have to follow is in the IRF standard agreement. And so that says, has to be through the coordinated entry system. Again, that's that HUD body at the local level. So people must have lived in the encampment or recently lived in the encampment. They have to meet certain income restrictions. They have to go through the coordinated entry system where homelessness needs to be verified. The Section 8 Code is not one that we have to abide by. It is one if we want to house people with Section 8 vouchers, which would be in our economic interest in the city. But as far as the eligibility criteria, you have before you what we must follow at a bare minimum. We mention Section 8 because we want to make sure that we leave that option open, but it is not a requirement of the IRF agreement or the Alliance agreement.
Yes, I know that the Alliance agreement is Medicaul. That's the big criteria.
Right, right.
The other one from the state?
It's the...
You know, I wish I could have had this packet to at least review and regurgitate and think about and process at least a week before the 72 hours that we got to be able to do anything with.
So I think, though, what Christie is stating is the council adopted the IRF agreement and that IRF agreement has those guidelines back in October. So the council already approved the IRF agreement, that funding and the guidelines of which we are to use that funding. That was already done back in October. What we're proposing tonight is to enter into a disposition and development and loan agreement to actually build the project. But how the funds, the eligibility criteria guidelines, that was done, the council agreed to that back in October. I just want to clarify that.
But we have three people up here that weren't here back in October.
And we've accepted, we have accepted the funding. So we would, so if the, because the grant guidelines, those would not change, right? And how we are to use the funding. So I do want to be clear that if that is the concern of the council in general, the majority of the council, it would be an issue of those guidelines, then regardless of the development, we'd still have those guidelines, right? Those overarching guidelines that we'd still have to follow. I don't know, city manager or mayor, if maybe we can take a recess or if you'd like us to continue this item and maybe bring back some additional information.
So the way our rules are is the abstention doesn't count as a vote and doesn't count as a no vote. So if Mrs. Lewis doesn't want to... If Mrs. Lewis has considered her vote and wants to keep it at an abstention, then the motion passes. And the issue with that, usually it'll take two votes, but since there's a loan involved with money, then it takes three votes. So do you want, do you want to reconsider your vote?
For the additional information that I'd like to see, would that inhibit or prohibit in any way this project moving forward? If we were able to get additional information?
Okay, so we would have to, either we could take a recess right now and you get your information, or we have to, we have to make a motion to... Since it's already voted, can I make a motion to... See, because if this dies, then I die.
I understand that. And that's what I'm saying.
And so only people can bring it forward. My understanding, Robins Rules and Orders, either you two. I can't ask for it to come back. Because I voted yes. Only the no or... Since it's a no vote, it can't come back to the council for six months? I have to review my Robins Rules and Orders unless a no vote requests it to be put back on the agenda. But we can't extend this. This has already been voted on. Continue it, I mean. If the pleasure of the council is to continue it, I suggest we take a break and we can discuss how that can happen. It would be better to get your votes in tonight because we're going to be doing a lot of gymnastics to undo what we just did. Okay, at this time, I'll take a 10-minute break and we'll be back in town. So, thank you. So we want to close. We want a room of rest. Okay, we're back from recess. I'd like to open this meeting again. And in the back, there was no Brown Act violations. Only two council members talked to each other, not more than that. So, we followed the law, just if anybody's wondering. Okay, yeah, so, yes, council members.
So, I'd like to know, am I able to change my vote?
Bill?
Mr. Vaughn?
Are you requesting to change your vote?
Well, after listening to, you know, some of the stuff that was going on afterwards and just kind of speaking, you know, when they were going, asking for votes, I mean, for Chrissy and the gentleman there and just kind of Mr. Lewis's things that she was talking about and things that were coming up, you know, I've reconsidered. That's why I'm asking that question.
So, our voting procedure is under our resolution for decorum. Does allow for a member, I'll just read it to you. A member may change his vote only if he makes a timely request to do so immediately following the announcement of the vote by the mayor or city clerk and prior to the time that the next item in order of business is taken up. So, you can request to change your vote.
Ms. Lewis, you have some questions?
Yes. Again, my main concern is for the safety of our community. I know there's specific criteria by which our city has to follow in order to get this state grant. I also realize that it can affect our housing element going down the road. I understand that. But I would still like staff to present to me, and, you know, and I don't know that it has to be in a meeting form, what the assurances are as to the type of residents that will be allowed to live in these facilities. I know that there was talk about rapists. You know, I'm concerned about people who have multiple felonies and, you know, they're repeat offenders. And people who are severely mentally ill, you know. There's no criteria for anybody in the state of California to stay on medications. The only thing that will do that is the conservatorship, and that's extremely limited in the county of Merced. So, these are the things that I'm concerned about. And also, to work with our staff to make sure that the amenities that are built around these communities are going to help the residents in the mobile home park be safe and secure. I know that wall, it was indicated there's a wall that flanks the Home Depot, I think it is. Is it Home Depot? I don't know how tall that wall is. But if it's sufficient, then, you know, personally for me, I think it should match that wall to give those residents security and not feel the pressure of what's going on. And, you know, we've been told tonight, it's on the record, that Case Management Services are going to be there in perpetuity for this project. So, I expect that to be there so that the residents who may end up having some issues or problems, that could be taken care of right away. And so, with that, Mayor, I'm willing to turn my vote from abstention to a yes vote with that criteria.
Okay, Bill. Did I even report the vote? I don't even remember. Does anybody remember I reported their vote at night? No, but they voted. I know they voted, but... Second, but did I state the vote? Right, okay, so I never actually came out and said the vote, which... Yeah. Okay, so with that, any other questions? I don't want to... So, I'm going to go ahead, and we have a motion and a second on item 10A for Resolution 6882. I'd like to call for a roll call vote, please.
Sanders?
Yes.
Chavez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Hammabeil?
Yes. So, congratulations. So, with that, I just want to just say, you know, I... Yeah, before we go on to this item, thank you, Bill. I just want to say that's, it's, I appreciate council member Chavez and Mayor Protem Lewis because they're just really looking out for the people of Los Banos. We all are. And I commend them on looking at every side. It's really important. That's really important to get through. And I think this really shows that we're going to be watching, if we're up here. But we're going to treat this project and other projects differently. So, I appreciate that. Going on to item B, City Council Resolution 6883. It's declaring pursuant to Government Code Section 54221 that real property owned by the city is exempt surplus land for purpose stated herein and finding that such declaration exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act. So, with that, there's... Any, Stacy, you want to say anything on that or no? This just deems this property exempt as a city exempt surplus land.
And that we can dispose of the property.
I talked to a couple of the other taxing agencies that could possibly use this property, and they're thinking that this is a very good project and they have no qualms about allowing the city to do what we have intended tonight. So, with that, any questions from council or do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6883 as read by title.
Second, I...
Okay, we have motion and second. Resolution 6883, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Ayes have it. We will move on. And with item 11 is Colorado Ballpark Project Update. This is Parks and Rec Director Joe. Joe, it's your show.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. With the addition of new city council members, I wanted to provide an update on the Colorado Ballpark Project. In addition, there is an item from the state to accept $1 million from a legislatively specified grant awarded to the city of Los Banos. To speak on that briefly, and I'll speak on it more, approving the resolution to accept the $1 million legislatively specified grant is the primary reason that we're providing this update tonight. This is the funding that was directed by Assembly person, Assembly member Esmeralda Soria. This resolution is not putting the $1 million into appropriations for the city of Los Banos to use, as in our city of Los Banos budget. It is a resolution for the state to then put that million dollars in their budget. We, there is still an application process that has to be completed. What it does is provide budget language in the state that there is funding available for the city of Los Banos for Colorado Ballpark renovation ADA upgrades. So essentially, it's, you know, it's red tape essentially for us to be able to get this funding. This funding is very similar legislatively specified grant is the same thing as the fire station funding that we got a few years back. I'm also seeking just direction from the City Council tonight in terms of next steps, as well as reviewing the project. As I mentioned, we have quite a bit of change on the City Council, and this is a significant project for our Parks Department in the city. So just a little background. Colorado Ballpark opened in June 1959. It is one of our oldest and most popular parks in town. It hosts Little League, Pop Warner Wildcats, as well as it hosts our skate park, tennis courts, and just generally is one of our larger parks. It's about a little over nine acres for the location there. The park is, as mentioned, very old. There's quite a bit of elements that have deteriorated. We have dealt with numerous issues on site. These include asphalt deterioration for both the tennis court, tennis courts and the parking lot, electrical issues, including the light poles and the buildings, flooding throughout the center kind of plaza area behind Field Two, ADA compliance throughout the facility. We've dealt with a number of vandalism issues over the years. Irrigation is original to the park. It has galvanized irrigation. You can see it on that first picture there. It's a very, very old irrigation, as well as general health codes relating to the park. So we have been working on this project for a number of years. This park, as I mentioned, has deteriorated over the years. And so I know as far as my involvement with the city, which I began with the city six years ago, we began discussing this as part of the Parks Master Plan process. We also applied for a grant that we were not awarded, which is the Rural Recreation and Tourism Grant. And then we've also held some stakeholder meetings with the Little League and skateboard groups. In addition, we brought, the last year, we brought the current concept to the Parks and Rec Commission, as well as City Council in March and last September. So just to review the current site map, there are three ball fields on site. You'll see two, I guess, larger fields, as well as the center field. The center field, which is Field Two, is the most used field. It's the 200-foot size. That's just the most popular age group. There are three buildings on site. A concession building behind Field Two, a concession building behind the north field, as well as the restroom facility. You'll also see the skate park and tennis courts. So there was a conceptual design presented in September, which was an update to the March conceptual plan. It shows a pretty dramatic renovation of the ballpark with the same footprint of the current existing ballpark. But you'll see that there are now two 200-foot fields, which is an item that Little League had requested for their own growth of their program as well. You'll see a centralized parking lot. This adds about 60 parking spaces, we project, going from about 115 to 175. You do also have the angled spots along Colorado Ave that are existing. You're also going from three buildings down to one, just because of that centralized location there on the, I guess, upper right of the concept, nearest to the two smaller fields. And then, of course, you see the two other amenities, which are the skate park, which is an upgraded and larger skate park, as well as the splash pad, which was discussed in September. And a splash pad does have a number of requirements. One of the reasons why you see the splash pad kind of flipped with where the current skate park is is because it does have distance requirements to restrooms. And one of the reasons why we identified Colorado Ballpark as a good site for a splash pad is because of the large parking lot and the restroom on site. Again, the restroom and related facilities have a number of requirements, and being able to build from scratch on that is something that's going to help us meet health codes, which for splash pads, pretty much have the same health codes as a pool, for example. A splash pad is something that's been highly requested from the community. It would be open seasonally from May to September. That is the largest change from the existing park design, and it would have a regular operational expense. And that's one of the items that I did want to make current council aware of, because, again, I understand that we have new council members. So a splash pad, again, it operates like a pool. So it's going to have chemical expenses and service expenses. And so, again, no matter where we put that, it's going to have those expenses as opposed to, say, the existing tennis courts. At the same time, it is a highly requested item from the public. And, of course, the city lacks a water feature, whether by pool or splash pad, currently. One of the ideas is to set up some rentable gazebos, shade spaces near the shade structures, or near the splash pad, that could be rented for birthday parties and time blocks. I don't think this would fully offset the cost of the splash pad, but it's different ways to try to generate some revenue from splash pad's use. Going into the next step, so we discussed a $15 million total project budget in September. And so far, we have identified internal funding. There has been $922,000 assigned from ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, for the Colorado Ballpark renovation. Additionally, we discussed utilizing the Park Development Fund. There is about $7.5 million available as of right now. That will continue to collect as development continues. This project will take several years. So we do anticipate that number between $7 and $8 million from the Park Development Fund, should City Council wish to assign that to this project. Financing through the Park Development Fund may also be an option that council may want to pursue. External funding, it begins with this state grant from Assemblymember Esmeralda Soria, which is $1 million. And then we are pursuing grants. Primarily, right now, we are looking at the LWCF grant and OLRP grants. LWCF is due in June. OLRP is due in March. The OLRP grant is a $300,000 to $15 million application, and the LWCF goes up to $6 million. There is match requirements as part of that, and we will be bringing those as separate items if the council wishes to direct us to do so. And, again, those grants are something that we feel are good fits for this ballpark. In the staff report, we discussed the area of Colorado Ballpark, which is in a very severely disadvantaged area of Los Banos. It's considered the highest possible score from the state of California. So it qualifies for quite a few grants, and so that's why we feel that it's a good candidate for that. There is airport land use and the impact of the renovation that we still need to review. That involves going to the County Air Commission, as well as other entities. And then another item that I would like to discuss tonight is any future public input or updates that the City Council may wish for during this latest, the March and September updates of the concept. We had a long list of meetings leading up to that, as well as some stakeholder meetings, but we have, other than Parks and Rec Commission and City Council, we haven't had specific meetings for that. And so staff would recommend having at least one public meeting in the near future to discuss this project. I can say that I've personally spoken with quite a few neighbors on site, Little Leaguers, skateboarders, and general park users. So we have collected quite a bit of input, but just because of the size of the project, we do recommend that. And that concludes the project. I'd just like to thank everyone that has supported this project. You know, it's one of the biggest, because it's one of the biggest items and something that I think a lot of people in the city of Los Banos grew up playing there or having kids play in there. It seems to impact a lot of people, and I appreciate their support that they provided to me during this process. Thank you.
Joe, I got a couple of questions. Is the skate park is on that map, is where it's located today?
The skate park, as far as this concept here on the page, it is to the south of where it currently exists. The splash pad is in that, and where the skate park is located.
So you're going to abandon the existing skate park?
Yes. And the reason for that is twofold. One, to get the splash pad closer to the restrooms in order, for compliance reasons. And two, in order to expand and modernize the skate park.
Okay, and the money on the Park Development Funds, $7 million out there is... Are those, are not out, those are just general funds for general parks? Not any specific parks we're talking about?
So, go ahead.
It's for development of a park. So there's, within the nexus, there's a pool, a skate park, and then 100% is for, there's percentages that apply to those two items. But in regards to a development of a park, it's 100% that can be used for that. And this is basically a brand-new park. It's taking the footprint and redoing it. So we're not maintaining it or bringing it, you know, renovations to bring it back to where it was. This is really just taking this piece of property and redoing it.
Questions from the council?
Eight million whatever it was in the Parks Fund, is that the entirety of what our Park Development Fund is?
So currently, we have $7.5 million in the Park Development Fund available. We do collect impact fees in order for the revenue for that account. That is based on residential development only. So we do anticipate continued residential development over the next couple of years. But yes, it would be the vast majority of that.
So how long, how long has it taken for that eight million to accumulate?
My first year, it was about $50,000. So that was six years ago.
So we're, so we, my issue is that we're taking the entirety of all of the Park Development and dumping it all, not dumping, I totally support the baseball part of this. It's the, it's kind of, putting everything in one park to me is like, I'd kind of rather see it spread out. But I understand being able to use the same bathrooms and parking lot to have all the different stuff. I get that there's a value in that.
Absolutely, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to bring this item forward is because it is a discussion item of where we would like to see this funding spent. I will say, in terms of spreading it around, it does need to fit under AB 1600 guidelines, developing parks, swimming pools, skate park, et cetera.
Spreading around to different parks.
Yes.
But also, also the way our parks have been constructed is a lot of the parks have been put into the existing development. So part of the, part of these impact fee funds that are coming through are then used to build parks. So as, for instance, I think you just built Sunrise Park.
We're in process.
Yeah, so that was, those were impact fees that went specifically for that park. So they, we are building parks as the developments are happening. This is just more of the regional type of thing.
Most of our parks have features for kids, you know, five to 11 years old or whatever. So we don't have, we have one skate park that I know is old and dated, and it doesn't really have a lot of stuff that kids want now. But we don't have, you know, the splash pad, the swimming pool, the dump tracks, all the stuff that people are asking for. Right. So just using the entire Parks Fund to do one park.
No, and I think, again, that's something that I want, I'm asking council to weigh, is that I think that the Parks Department, over the last couple of years, we've renovated O'Jones Ballpark, we're in process to add complex. But there is Pacheco Park that needs support, a swimming pool, things like that. But that being said, as you mentioned, I think specified, specialized amenities-wise, it's something that we're very much lacking in town. There's severe compliance issues on site at Colorado Ballpark, as I mentioned. And that's one of the reasons why there's urgency to try to invest in this park and bring it up.
I think a splash pad of Pacheco, right on the high, that would be an awesome place to work, because people would see it as they drive by, and I think it would look really good for the city. I like Colorado Ballpark as being very baseball and softball centers. That's my opinion.
Yes. And before I take other questions, there was a concept in March presented to City Council, and I'm happy to bring that back. That was essentially the same concept, except the splash pad was moved, the skate park was moved to the north where it currently exists, and the two tennis courts were essentially replaced with what, the tennis courts that currently exist, replaced. So if that was something that council was interested in...
What was the price tag on that one?
So we just, at that time, we had estimated the project between 13 and 17 million. The engineer estimated the splash pad would probably increase the project by about $1 million. However, some of the biggest costs related to the splash pad is the supporting amenities, things like parking lots, restrooms, that sort of, those sorts of improvements. And so that's why, that's one of the reasons that it fits nicely there. But I can also understand what you're addressing in terms of keeping that park.
So in some cases, like what Joe is saying in regards to the grants and Little League grants, the Park Development Fund kind of works nicely as a matching to bring, you know, that skin in the game, so to speak, to build, to build our...
The matching fund.
Yeah, to build our application, so the application looks like, oh, no, we're really serious about this. We're bringing, in some cases, it's a 50% match.
And I was going to ask about the, so these grants that we're going for, do you have to have, like, this is the plan that we're doing in order to get the grant? You have to have a solid plan?
So solid might be a difficult way to define it, but you have to submit a conceptual plan. But I emphasize that it's conceptual. They do, there are ineligible elements that you have to be careful of, but generally speaking, there is some flexibility there.
Thank you, Mayor. So looking at this park, just for a little history sake, and some of you may remember, the council did request that a splash pad be built at Pacheco Park. And for that very reason, it's centralized, it's visible. We realized that we would have to develop more parking there, because we really don't have any parking at Pacheco Park. But I feel very strongly that, you know, I'm not in favor of having a splash pad at this park. I'd rather keep it purely for what it's intended to be, which is a baseball park. And especially in light of the fact that, you know, we have activity at our airport. I don't see that, for me, as an appropriate place to put a splash pad. Are we required to do any environmental testing with the rehab of this park?
No, however, we have completed the geotechnical and topographic studies, surveys for this.
What does that entail?
So topographic is just the grading of the site, I guess you'd say. Geotechnical is a soil test.
And so the soil testing came back okay?
Yes, there's no issues.
All right. Okay, so we're required to do a land use report for this project?
So one of the items of this is that it's part of the municipal airport property. It's all one big parcel. So we'll need to go to the Land Use Commission, the Air Commission with Merced County, and present a concept to them and get their approval.
So is that the same as the Airport Commission? Is that all one and the same? Okay.
Yes, sorry, Airport Land Use Commission. Sorry.
Okay, all right. Now, we didn't use all the funding for the pickleball court. There was money left over out of that. Are we going to funnel that into this project?
That would be a City Council's direction.
Okay, I don't know how much. I know we were under budget when we approved that, so...
About 400,000?
400,000.
I believe it was about 400,000.
Yeah, okay.
So just also, a word of caution regards to the ARPA funds, that we have to spend them by the end of this year. So we, in moving this project forward, this most likely would be related to the initial costs of this park, so...
Well, that still would be a savings to the city.
Right, right, I'm just, I'm just, you know...
Right. And I do realize that ARPA funding has to be...
Bringing that for the record.
Spent, I think it's by the end of 2025.
Yes.
Yeah. Obligated and spent. Okay, and the tennis courts have been eliminated altogether in this project. And when I read in the staff report, there wasn't any indication about where they, if or where they would be replaced. It's just kind of a done deal.
So just real quick on the tennis courts, that's something that we can certainly bring back. As I mentioned, there is a concept that I can share with council. Again, going back to September, there was discussion of the tennis courts, and it was felt at the time that it was easier to find another location for the tennis courts as opposed to all the costs associated to the splash pad.
I mean, I don't even know how many people are out there playing tennis anymore.
I had five kids play baseballs at that, baseball at that field, so I was out there 10 years straight, pretty much, and I don't think I ever saw anyone play tennis.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's kind of like the bocce ball court that we built at the community center. Nobody's doing bocce ball anymore, so it doesn't seem to be cost-effective to do that. Let's see. I'm trying to read my notes here to see if I can...
While you look, I'm going to ask a question.
Okay.
One second.
Sure, go ahead.
When, when do you think the pickleball courts will be, I've been getting a lot of questions. I know it's not this sudden, but you know when construction might start?
Just very quickly on the pickleball project, the notice of proceed was issued early last week. There is PG&E work to be completed first. They are meeting onsite on Friday. We did a pre-con with PG&E already. There's a rerouting of existing electrical onsite relating to the ball field, and that work will be completed in the next two weeks, and then you'll see a groundbreaking for the mobilization of the pickleball court.
I think we should have a groundbreaking for it.
All for that.
Okay, so my, my next question is, or actually, it's a statement. We've had one of our local developers come to our council offering to help build a regional park, which would include swimming pool and, you know, various other amenities for our community. Certainly, we don't have that in writing now, but it's, it's, it's a, an option, you know, that we can work on. So I say that to say is that I really would like to keep this purely a baseball park and take away the splash pad. I'm not sure, you know, what else we need to do there. If we can move the skateboard park, or if there's anything additional that you want to add to that, or if you just want to make a nice picnic area there, or a rest area for the kids who are playing in the three parks. It's like, where do they go? Or when you have another team coming on to meet with another team for another tournament, you know, where are these kids going to be? So that might be like a waiting or a holding area for them to sit with some shade covering. So that's kind of my proposal on that.
A place to warm up and throw pitches and stuff. I mean, if anytime you go take kids to baseball, there's teams warming up.
Yes, in a few minutes.
I would like to say, I don't want to see the city lose this skate park and not build another one. So if we're going to lose it for this park, I want to identify somewhere else that we're going to go.
Well, it's not the skate park that I'm...
We're talking about the water park that we're going to lose?
It's not the skate park that I have concern about, it's the water feature.
I want everything in this, I just don't necessarily want it all in the same place.
Yeah, it wasn't proposed originally to be all in the same place, yeah. So again, that's kind of my take on it. I think we can, you know, not necessarily just work with one developer, but maybe multiple developers to help us build a nice regional park with amenities in it. And for me, you know, I prefer not to see a splash pad in this area. It's just way too remote, and I'd like to be at somewhere more centralized. Or if we do a nice facility where there's multiple athletic features, then, you know, we could put it there if that's what the council so desires.
So, Carson, if there's a change in that water deal pulled out of that, does that affect your funding or do anything?
No, it doesn't affect it.
So it sounds like you need to do some work with the council, see which way we're going to go. And I, that was one of the first things we did when I was mayor way, way back, way back when. That skate park, and we actually, we had probably 10 meetings, public meetings, just for the skate park. And we, and then I created a commission, and I don't think anybody was over 18 years old that was on the commission. And they all came with clay, and they built, they designed their ramps that they saw, and then we went to Santa Cruz, and so it could be a lot of fun in designing a park.
I, just on a personal note, I can't speak high enough about the skateboarders that I've dealt with during this public process. They've come out, they've been positive, it's great.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, yeah.
Certain timeline that's going to, I don't want to say anything here either.
So just, I guess, first and foremost, I'd like to approve the resolution to, that's my recommendation, to approve that million dollars. And then next would be just any direction that I could get from City Council, whether it be public input or bringing this item back, or whatever that you may...
If you make a mistake and you put $2 million on that request, you think you'll catch it?
Mr. Newsom will like that too much.
Go ahead and open up to the public, why don't you have something to say to us?
So I, I do live in the general area on West J Street. I do work with a lot of children that live in apartments in those, in that area. I bring clay pots and flowers and things, and we work together, and I pack up my stuff afterwards. But, so originally, when this was, this was all spoken about, and I remember the skateboarders back when, but they were also back, a younger generation was back at that meeting. They were, they were all lined up back here. And so just a few months ago, they were all, they were all here. That general area, well, I don't know what's going to happen in the future, whether or not a developer, whether or not the airport's going to move, and a developer's going to buy that, whether or not the shelter will eventually be like Morgan Hill, where it's half shelter, half community center or youth center, putting that in there. But really, there's a lot of children that don't have access to great air conditioning by the area where they, where we all know that they live at. They live in apartments, it's, and there's a lot of older homes, swamp coolers and other things that children are living in. So this general area, to have an area where children can, that don't have a lot, and will never get a lot, they're not all baseball players. So having a little bit of something for these children to be able to say, when they're 40 or 50 years old, to say, I remember that. And, and, and mind you, the baseball individuals were here, everybody was here at that meeting a few months ago. So I just wanted to speak up for the neighborhood and for the neighborhood children that can't speak and might need something. That area has never had, and maybe it's been generational, but that park has never been improved in for a long time. And there's been generations of children that have grown up in that area, that have played in that area, kicked rocks in that area, but that's all they remember. So they're not going to have a swimming pool in their new neighborhood. They're not going to have anything to cool themselves off. And they might not ever play baseball. And those skateboarders might not be able to travel across town to our new skateboard park. So when we're all talking about this, please think of the children. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, I've seen anyone move on. That is, you know, I know it's a different time, but, and when I grew up, we had a swimming pool, for the town. It's just too bad today. We had it in the plans, I had it in the plans in 2006, but things changed when I, but anyway. So before us now, if you have any more questions for Joe, it's just basically asking him to ask for the million dollars from the state. And I think, Joe, you already got enough dialogue from us to know that we have to go back and maybe look at what we want to do there, and open up to the public and everything, see what's needed. So with that, do I have a motion?
Sure.
Sure, go ahead.
Joe, do you have enough to move forward with the direction from council on the project overall?
It sounds like perhaps a public meeting and then bringing this item back for City Council's review. Is that fair to say?
Sure.
So, Mayor, I think Joe asked us tonight to give him direction. And so if we give him direction, then he can bring that direction to the public as to what the council wants. So that's what I think we are supposed to do.
So you want to give direction on exactly what's going to go in that park?
Well, I...
Well, I think with, maybe we should have the public meetings first, then, then we have the direction.
I agree. I think the only thing that I might, I think Joe might need clarification on, and correct me if I'm wrong, is how do we want to present the, do we want to do options for the water park in and out? I guess what I'm looking for is guidance from you on how you want to proceed with your public meetings in regards to that picture right there. You want them, you want them to give you some direction on that?
Yes, of course. I will say I don't want to bring an amenity that City Council has no intention of approving. I want to maintain a conceptual design that's realistic for our council to approve, no matter the amenity. But that being said, yes, if there's direction on, on how to gather that community input, I would appreciate that. My thought is to certainly have a presentation aspect to it and then a Q and A section of it. But if there is, in the past, we have given out maps to allow people to draw kind of what they want. I think that, you know, we've, we've collected quite a bit of public input, and I think, you know, of course, continually redesigning the whole park is going to, it's going to be a redundant process, I think. But that being said, if that's, if that's the direction from council, I'm happy to do whatever we need to do to keep moving this project forward. I think it's both from the neighbors to the endpoint, but as well as the users of the park, it's important to make sure that this investment is what we want. And it's going to work for us for not just a five to 10-year period. This is a long-term investment. So I think if council can just direct, maybe any comments about the public meeting process, how that information is preferred to be collected, or if that's something that staff should just recommend on their own, or any other comments?
Some of it is the cost, you know, and so maybe if you also break it down, what the three fields, what that costs, and maybe there's just some other options it gives us. I don't know if I'm ready to make a recommendation myself on exactly what's going to go in that park.
Well, I, for me, I mean, I listened to Councilmember Sanders, and I agree with him. I don't want to take all of this $7 million and put it, you know, just wipe out that fund. And we have the, you know, $400,000 left in the ARPA fund from the pickleball court. So I'm looking at how we can reconstruct our budget to try to get this stuff done as quickly as possible. But again, I'm in favor of it being purely a baseball park. I've heard from people about this park, and they, they don't want things disruptive, where, you know, the whole park's going to come out and then our kids don't have any place to play or have baseball. I don't know how that is going to happen. But, you know, that, again, that's something that needs to come back to the council to let us know how that process is going to happen. So I'm just putting it out tonight for me. I, I, I want to see, I don't want the splash pad there. I don't think it's a good placement for it. I think we need to put it someplace that's more centralized for everybody to get to it and to be able to use additional monies that are in ARPA to get this project moving forward as quickly as possible. And I want to see it remain a baseball park, and perhaps if the skateboarders are happy with what they've designed, then a smooth bowl. I'm okay with the skateboard park being there. And then the remainder of the property there, which was designated for the water feature, be, you know, a holding area for the other teams that may be coming in there.
I'm not sure what our current complaint is on the skate park. I've heard that there's just no runoff area, so I'm curious if we can preserve what's there and maybe add to it to save some costs. What I'd, what I'd like to see is to have the ball parks the way we need to have them so we can have tournaments and stuff there, but at a cost that we can still consider doing a splash pad somewhere else with the associated stuff, we need the building, the rest of the park down and all that. That's kind of what I'd like to see. I'd really like to see a pump track somewhere, some point, I'm not sure that that's part of this plan.
Seems to have time, sort of detail of the project, but we can leave it and try to secure the spending there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that is definite.
So did I clear it all up for you?
Yeah, I think so. I, we'll do public input process, and then we'll bring this item back.
So I know, just when we do the public input, all the years I did it, there's the need assessment and the want assessment. So we got to be very careful how we structure that. Okay, so I have a determination by the council for a motion.
Yes, Mayor, since this is in my district, I'll make the motion to approve Resolution Number 6884 to accept the grant funding of $1 million for the city of Los Angeles from state representatives of our district.
Motion, do we have a second? Okay, motion and second. As stated, Resolution 6884, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have. Thank you, Joe. Item 12 is a public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at a public hearing described within herein or in writing correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. This public hearing is to receive public comment and consideration of an annexation of approximately 170 acres to construct a basin for the purpose of surface and stormwater capture, as well as an initial groundwater recharge. As part of this project, a general plan amendment is proposed to change the land use designation from ag rural to civic institution to reflect the intent use of this site as a public water management facility. Additionally, the property is proposed to be pre-zoned as public facility to align with the planned use. The project site is located on Merced County Assessor Parcel Number 082020024424010004 and 073220014. Before this will be a Resolution 6885 and an Ordinance 1207. So as, as I just stated, we want to bring in 170 acres to construct a basin for surface and stormwater. Anyone that would like to speak on this annexation into our city for those purposes, you may come forward at this time. Okay, we, I do not see anyone coming forward, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and go back, let's see, this is Chuck, is this you? You're going to talk, Stacy, it's you, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So we've been here a pretty, pretty long night so far, and this is a great project, so I'm going to try to explain it briefly. So the proposal before you tonight is for an annexation of approximately 170 acres. This is, like the mayor said, for the construction of a basin designed for surface water and stormwater capture with the additional benefit of incidental groundwater recharge. It also includes a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from agricultural rural to civic institutional to reflect the intended use of the site as a public water management facility owned and operated by the city, and then pre-zoned as public facility to align with the planned use. This is a picture, an aerial view of our current city limits, and I'm, I hope that this comes across clear on the screen. But the current city limits is outlined in red and hatched. So everything within that red area is within our current city limits. The outline of yellow of that highlighted area is the project site. So that is between the San Luis Canal and the Santa Fe Canal, and it's, it's currently, a portion of it is outside of the city limits. So you can see where the current city limits are now and how the project fits into that. And you can see that there's just a sliver of the project that is within our current city limits, but that the majority of the project to the north and south legs of the project are outside of the city limits, which poses an issue for processing of regulatory permits. We'd have to go through the county to be able to build the project and be on their timelines. We'd have to go through the county to be able to build the project and be on their timelines. And this is a city facility that we feel should be inside city limits, which would allow the city to regulate our own process and permitting. This is then what the proposed city limits would look like with the annexation of the 170 acres. The environmental analysis occurred on October 23rd, 2024, where the Los Banas Planning Commission considered and approved a mitigated negative declaration for the basin and storm water capture project. And at that time, an annexation wasn't contemplated until planning staff collaborated with the public work staff and determined that to make the project the most efficient it could be, we should consider annexing it into the city, at which time, planning staff reached out to the Executive Director of LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission, to see the feasibility in annexation. He totally supported the idea and with our partnership with the Grassland Water District and, and just the feasibility of the project in itself, we knew we would have support moving forward. So that's really how this project came to fruition, the annexation component of it. But the environmental component had already been approved by the Planning Commission through a mitigated negative declaration. And this environmental review determined that the project would not have a significant impact on the environment with the incorporation of mitigation measures. The Planning Commission approved the mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project. And we also filed a notice of determination, which is a requirement of the California Environmental Quality Act right after that determination was made. And we posted that with the State Office of Planning and Research and Merced County Clerk. So the project analysis consists of the annexation to the city's jurisdiction and it facilitates the development of the basin, which would be regulated by the city, regulated and permitted by the city. Then it also has a general plan amendment and this would be to reflect the intended public use of the site. And then it has a public facility zoning designation, which would be appropriate for a water management facility operated by the city. The site's strategic location near existing water infrastructure, including the San Luis and Santa Fe Canals, ensures efficient water delivery and management. The project supports the city's general plan goals of enhancing infrastructure and water resource management while aligning with regional water sustainability priorities. I apologize for the fuzziness of this, but this is the city's current general plan map and the project site is outlined in yellow. And essentially what we would be doing if approved by the City Council tonight, we would be taking what is that green area and gray area outlined in yellow, which is agricultural rural, and it does have the SR 152 bypass, but we'd be taking that and putting it as civic institutional, so for, for municipal purposes. Public comment, a public hearing notice was published in the West Side Express on February 5th and notices were mailed out to the property owners within a 300 foot radius of the project site on February 5th for the hearing tonight on February 19th. And as of the date of this staff report, no comments have been received. So with that, staff is recommending that the City Council would consider adopting Resolution Number 6885 requesting the annexation and general plan amendment of approximately 170 acres of property located between the San Luis and Santa Fe Canals and then waive the first reading and introduce Ordinance Number 1207 amending the zoning map to pre-zone approximately 170 acres located between the San Luis and Santa Fe Canals for the city's storm basins capture project. And that concludes my staff report. I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question, Stacy. There was mentioned here that there would be a memorandum of understanding with Grasslands Water District. Is this for division of how much water each we get versus what they get or, and also does this include any costs that would, for us to develop this? Are they going to share in that?
Yeah. Councilmember Lewis and members of council, yes, to answer your question, it does involve Grasslands. We do have a, an agreement, draft agreement with them to how to share the water in the basin. They have some utility in storing water and as do we. There's a draft memorandum of understanding that's being prepared and will be brought to council next month. They also are going to participate in the construction and development of the basin about a million dollars worth. The total project's about three and then Grasslands is, has a, a grant in the amount of a million and you'll see that grant, the draft MOU brought to you next month.
And, and does that also include them sharing the cost for the application fee or do we absorb all of that?
In terms of the annexation?
Well, it says on here that there's an application filing fee of $2,700 with LAFCO.
Yes, no, that would be the city's cost to annex the property as it will be ours.
All right. Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions by council? Okay, what is the desire of the council? Okay, I'm not a good, Mr. Vaughn says I have to open the public hearing again, so I'm going to do that, make him happy. And anyone now that, no, that's okay. We want to hear from you.
I think it's a perfect site for, for you, Mayor, and the council to bring back and with Grasslands being part of this, wild on the wetlands again. That was your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be a perfect site for that once a year.
Good idea. Anyone else would like to speak on this project? Please come forward.
I just wanted to know exactly what the purpose of it is for. Is it, I don't quite understand the purpose of it. I mean, is it for city, for the city to have more water or, or what? That's my only question.
Okay, thank you. It's a good question. So Chuck?
Yes, sir, members of council. Yeah, the project, we have our, our ability to, our capacity and ability to hold water is really critical in terms of storm water, sewage water and trading water with the other agencies. You know, the, right now we get the bulk of our water from the underground, we pump it and there, there's a lot of restrictions. We're going to have to find other areas to retain water and use water in different ways to like trade with other agencies as well as recharge. So the, this basin gives us a flexibility for a lot of ways to save water as well as trade water in exchange with other irrigation districts. And that's going to be really critical going forward. 500 acre feet is a significant amount of capacity, which is going to really help us in the future, future projects for the city.
Thank you. And when he says wastewater, it's the gray water that comes off, so it's not, it's treated water. But with that, any other one like to come forward? I'll close the public hearing. And what is the intent of our City Council?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 685 as read by title.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second as stated. Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Now we need a motion for Ordinance 1207.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of Ordinance 1207 as read by, oh, excuse me, as read by title and to...
We'll do one at a time.
Okay.
Yeah. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to waive the first reading of Ordinance 1207. Any questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Now we need a, a motion for the introduction of Ordinance 1207.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce Ordinance 1207 as read by title.
Second.
We have a motion to introduce 1207 as stated. Questions or comments? Go call, please.
Sanders?
Yes.
Chavez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Amabat?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Item 13, consideration approval for the tentative agreement, TA memorandum of understanding, MOU between the City of Los Banas and the Los Banas Police Middle Managers Association, LBP PMA. I guess it's getting late. Got any thought anymore? And so with this, we will go to our interim city manager, Mr. Kerry Breezy.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. Pursuant to the government code, our, in taking action on this item, City Council must orally, must orally report a summary of the recommendations regarding salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of a local agency's executives. Therefore, I'm reporting the following summary regarding such items appearing on the agenda. It's a little bit long, so bear with me. Item number 13 on the agenda pertains to final action by the City Council of Los Banas regarding the recommendation to approve the new memorandum of understanding for the Los Banas Police Middle Managers Association, which contain the following changes to compensation for the police commanders. Police commanders constitute local agency executives, because they are required by job description, to serve in the absence of the police chief. The changes to compensation for police commander, commanders are as follows. Number one, effective February 16th, 2025, the salary schedule for police commanders will be increased by a cost of living adjustment of 1/4% or 0.25%. Number two, effective February 16th, 2025, the salary schedule for police commanders will be increased by an equity adjustment of 6.2%. Incumbents will be placed in the adjusted salary step that is the closest step to their salary step prior to the application of the equity adjustment, which does not represent a reduction in pay. Such adjustment may result in employees being placed in a lower salary step, but shall not result in a reduction of pay. And Lucy and I can explain that to you if you need clarification. Number three, effective February 16th, 2025, police commanders will receive a lump sum payment of $3,050 as non-discretionary incentive to ratify the agreement. Four, effective July 1st, 2025, the salary schedules for the job classifications represented by the bargaining unit will be increased by a cost of living adjustment of 3%. Five, effective July 1st, 2026, the salary schedules for the job classifications represented by the bargaining unit will be increased by a cost of living adjustment of 3%. Six, effective February 16th, 2025, certificate pay for commanders who possess a peace officer standards and training advanced certificate will increase from $225 per month to $400 per month. Seven, effective February 16th, 2025, certificate pay for commanders who possess a peace officer standards and training supervisory certificate will increase from $275 a month to $500 per month. Number eight, effective in 2025, employees may make a written irrevocable election in December to cash out vacation to be accrued the following calendar year. Employees who accrue 6.67 hours of vacation per calendar month of employment may elect to cash out 80 hours of accrued vacation per year. Employees who accrue 10 or more hours of vacation per calendar month of employment may elect to cash out up to 120 hours of accrued vacation per year. Number nine, effective February 16th, 2025, management leave for police commanders will increase from 40 hours per year to 48 hours per year. And that is, all is associated with this item, so the recommendation again is to adopt the resolution approving the TA slash MOU between the City of Los Banas and the Los Banas Police Middle Managers Association.
It also includes the police services manager and that wasn't stated in, because she's not an executive, but she's also included in this group.
Okay, thank you. Any questions by the council? We've been having many meetings on, closed sessions on this, so everybody's up to speed on all this. Any other questions? It's good to see this coming before the council and making our employees whole. So what is the determination of the council?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6887 as read by title. I think you, did you read it into title already?
Yes.
Okay, as read by title.
Okay, we have a motion and second as stated for Resolution 6887. Any questions, comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Next item is City Council Resolution 6888. Is there anything else you want to state on that?
Uh, no, not on my...
Okay. Okay, we have a motion for that then, please.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to approve Resolution 6888 as read by title.
Second.
We have a motion and second for Resolution Number 6888 as stated. Questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Next item, item 14, consideration approval, tentative agreement, memorandum of understanding and MOU between the City of Los Banas and the Los Banas Police Officers Association, LBP O A. And we'll go back to...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, it's the same thing, government requirement, government code requirement before taking action that we have to state orally a summary of the recommendations regarding the salaries, salary schedule, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of a...
That's item 15 or on item 14?
14. I'm sorry?
We're on item 14? That's for item 15. What you're reading?
Oh, I, I have, it shows item 14 on mine. That's okay, let me find it, I'll find it.
No, there isn't one for the POA because they're not executives.
Okay.
So it's just a presentation of the staff report.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, my apologies, the MOU for the Los Banas Police Officers Association is roughly as follows, a COLA salary increase of 2 and 3/4% for police officers effective February 16th, July 1st, 2025, let me go back, February 16th, 2025, July 1st, 2025, and July 1st of 2026. An equity adjustment salary schedule increase for police officers of 1/4%, 0.25% effective February 16th, 2025, July 1st, 2025, and July 1st of 2026. This is a three-year agreement. Amendment to the cafeteria plan allowance for health, vision, dental, and life insurances as it pertains to increasing the dollar caps amount over the term of the agreement. A uniform allowance which will be increased to $1,000 per year. Certificate pay will be increased to $150 for the police officer standards and training intermediate certificate. Master pay, master officer pay, excuse me, will increase from $200 a month for MPO 1 and $642 a month for MPO 2. Ratification incentive in the amount of $3,046. And the recommendations are tonight to adopt the resolution approving the TA MOU between the City of Los Banas and the LBP O A and adopt the resolution approving the associated amendments to the salary schedule. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Again, we've been over this in closed session many a times, so the council's seen this and approved it. I'm glad we're moving forward. Any... and approved it. I'm glad we're moving forward. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted, 6890, as read by title.
Okay, we have a motion for city resolution 6889. As stated, any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Now, resolution number 6890.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution, resolution 6890 as read by title.
Second that? Okay, a motion and second as stated for resolution 6890. Any questions or comments? Not hearing any. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Fantastic. Item 15, consideration approval of City Council Resolution 6891, amending Division 4 salary schedule, employee classification relating to changes to Section A administration, Section B finance, Section C community economic development, Section D public works, Section E, Parks and Recreation, Section F fire and building, and Section G police for unrepresented miscellaneous employees. So with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. For item number 15, again, I'm going to tell you what the government code section is because it isn't quite lively enough. It's government code section 54953 subsection C 3, Your Welcome Bill, requires that before taking final action, the City Council must orally report a summary of the recommendation regarding the salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits to a local agency's executives. Therefore, I am reporting the following summary regarding such items appearing on the agenda. Item number 14 on the agenda pertains to final action by the City Council of Las Vegas regarding the recommendation to approve changes to the compensation for department heads and assistant department heads. Assistant department heads constitute local agency executives when they are required by job description to serve in the absence of the department head. The changes to compensation are as follows. February 20, excuse me, February 16th, effective date 2025, the salary schedule for department heads and assistant department heads will be increased by a cost of living adjustment of one quarter percent, 0.25%. Number two, effective February 16th, 2025, the salary schedule for the following classifications will be increased by the following equity adjustments. Assistant fire chief, 8.95%. Assistant public works director, 7.5%, and human resources director, 15.23%. Incumbents and classifications with salary steps will be placed in the adjusted salary step with the, that is the closest step to their salary step prior to application of the equity adjustment, which does not represent a reduction in pay. Such adjustment may result in an employee being placed in a lower salary step, but shall not result in a reduction of pay. So again, for item number 15, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, we are asking that you approve the changes to the unrepresented miscellaneous employee salary schedule, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Those classifications that he read, those are just the executives. It's for all unrepresented miscellaneous employees that are getting that 0.25% increase, and there are also others that are getting the equity increase. The assistant public works director, did you say that one? Yes. The crime analyst is getting a 6.53% equity. The dispatch supervisor is getting an 8.64% equity. Facilities manager, a 3.47% equity. Finance manager, 14.67% equity. Housing program manager, 14.67% equity. Parks and Recreation manager, 3.47% equity. Property evidence tech, 5.52% equity. Public Works Operations Manager, 3.47% equity, and Public Works Supervisor, 1.32% equity. And I just want to personally thank the council for the support in getting these agreements.
Yes, thank you, Lucy, for the clarification. And just to be clear, the forms that I read were for a requirement of the government code for agency executives. The information that Lucy just read is in your staff report and available to the public if anyone's interested.
Okay, any questions, comments? Again, we were in closed session about this, discussed it for many times, and I just want to state that staff was excellent. Lucy, you did an excellent job, and we really appreciate it. And I also want to bring up that even though the unrepresented employees that didn't have a union behind them, or we felt it was, this council felt it was to their benefit and ours to recognize that they needed to be brought up even though they were already finished bargaining. So it's good to be fair all the way around, and I appreciate that from this council. With that, we will entertain a motion for, let's see, we're on.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 6891 as read by title.
All right, we're second that? Okay, motion and second for 6891, resolution. Any further comments or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carried unanimously. One more. Number 16, consideration ordinance 1206, amending Section 2-3126 of Article 1, Chapter 3 of the Title II of the Las Vegas Municipal Code relating to the city manager. This is a second reading. Bill, you want to just, are you, Bill, are you awake, Bill?
Yes, yes. The first reading of this ordinance 1206 occurred at your last meeting. Essentially, it amends ordinance number 2-3.126 to provide that city manager may be removed or temporarily suspended on an affirmative vote or three or more council persons. This was part of the ordinance before it was repealed a couple of years ago. So this is the second reading and adoption, or asking that the council waive the second reading by motion and voice vote, and then by motion approve ordinance number 1206 by roll call.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions or comments? This is the second time we've seen it. This brings us back to our used-to-be, good old days.
Mayor, I'd like to take this one since I brought it forward.
Yeah, go ahead.
All yours. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 1206.
Wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading, I'm sorry, of ordinance 1206 as read by title.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second to waive the second reading of 1206. Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Yes, and Mayor, excuse me, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1206 as read by title.
Okay, we have a motion and second for ordinance 1206, the adoption. As stated, questions or comments? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Sanders?
Yes.
Chavez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Amabile?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go into appointments of the city council members to the Las Vegas Downtown Property and Business Improvement District Board, and with that, we'll go to our economic community planning. Everybody over there. Stacy, let us, tell us what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this particular item is asking to appoint a city council member to represent the City of Las Vegas on the Las Vegas Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. On August 7th, the Las Vegas City Council held a public hearing, tabulated ballots, and adopted resolution number 6821 to renew the Las Vegas Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. And within that district, the City of Las Vegas owns nine parcels that are assessed, and this particular improvement district is for 10 years. It does have a 10-year term that began January 1st, and it will end December 31st, 2034 unless renewed by ballots through the Prop 218 process, of, by ballots with a vote of the property owners. And it does encompass, the district itself does encompass five whole and partial blocks in the commercial core of Las Vegas Downtown. So it's essentially bound by 7th Street on the eastern boundary. It is up 2K Street, out to 5th Street, and up to the alley just above, just north of I Street, so the alley behind Bank of America. The city has had, this district has been in existence since 2020, and the city has had a city council member as a representative since its inception in 2020. And so staff is requesting that the city council would appoint a city council member to represent the city on the Downtown Association Board that governs the Las Vegas Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. That concludes my report, and I'm here to answer any questions.
How many meetings do they have? One meeting a month?
They do, they do. Their bylaws call for quarterly meetings, but they, they do hold more meetings than that, about monthly.
Any questions for staff? Then I'll entertain a nomination for council representation on the, let's see, the Downtown Property and Business Improvement District.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate the students.
Do I hear any other nominations? Okay, I will close nominations, and now we'll do a vote for council, City Council Resolution number 6892, and also appointing Mayor Protam Debra Lewis as our representative. I guess I didn't give you any time to back out.
I was looking over there, but he wasn't looking at me.
That council members, it was gone, that last one. Take care of that in August. Okay, with that, I need to make a motion to, as stated, for 6892. Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second for resolution 6892 as stated, and putting Mayor Protam Lewis as our representative on that board. Any questions or comments? Not hearing any. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you for.
Thanks for volunteering.
Yeah. That was strong on me, I guess, I don't know. Okay, appointment of members of the following commission. We have Parks and Recreation Planning and, and two, actually, a couple for Planning Commission. And, let's see. Parks and Recreation, that's you, Joe. You want to just state what we did, and then, these all my, these are all mine? Okay, never mind, Joe. I'll take it. Okay, so what we do now, a little bit different. If you go back when I was mayor, the first time usually was just the mayor's selection, and selected a lot of people that were on boards. So now the, it's a good thing. Now the council, now we're in district, so when it comes into district, that district representative on the council, along with the mayor, along with the department head that takes care of that commission, meets and interviews the people, usually on Zoom, it's like a 15-minute interview. And I, what I was so impressed with is the amount of applications we had and people we had, we had an interview. I think one day was nine. We interviewed one. And, you know, we might have two openings, we have nine people interviewing. I can't thank these people enough. I mean, I'm sorry, I wish we could appoint everybody, because there were really good people out there, but there's only two positions open. So it's become difficult, and hopefully we made all the right decisions. But our first Park and Rec Commission, that's two, two-year terms, expiring December 31st, 2026. I nominate Civil Halloran and Brad Gargano for those positions, and I'd like to make that, that motion, if I could have a second, please. Okay, we have a motion and second as stated. Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next is Planning Commission. We had one unexpired term for District 3, expiring December 31st, 2026, and the nomination is Stephen Nunes. And again, a lot of good people applying for those jobs, those commissions, so I'd like to make a motion to nominate Stephen Nunes for Planning Commission. We have a second, motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. And last one's Planning Commission is one, two-year term, and this is at large, so when it says at large, that's basically, that's the mayor's nomination along with these other ones, because I'm the large member, at-large member, so I nominate William McBride for that position, and I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
So we have a second and a motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carried. Again, thank everybody that applied. We enjoyed interviewing you. Please, there's other openings, please put your names in. We want more participation in our city. We really do. The more we hear from our residents, the better everybody is. Item 19, advertisement public notices. There is nothing to report. And that's 19. Item number 20 is our city manager's report. So, Mr. Breezy.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, first and foremost, I want to thank you all for giving me this opportunity to serve with you again. Tonight was a great example of one of the reasons why I chose it, because I have a ton of respect for all the people in this room, all the employees for the city, and so it made my decision very easy. Tonight's meeting was just a great example of how we get done, we get business done here at the city. Not always perfect, but we do the best that we can, and we keep moving. Second, for the time being, we have a large list of all number one priorities. Everything is a number one priority for us right now, and that's, that's, I think the fire chief said it to me the other day, it's like drinking from a fire hose. I appreciate that comment now more than ever. But everything right now is either 1A, 1B, 1C, and I appreciate all the department heads hanging in there with me because I call them every day, all the time, asking them for follow-up or questions about something. But again, it's one of the reasons why I was excited to take this opportunity up, because there's a lot of good stuff going on in the City of Las Vegas, and I certainly enjoy being part of that. The homeless encampment, as far as projects, that's a big one that staff is very acutely aware of, and so we started cleanups today. We have another cleanup in a couple days. We've got some training to get staff through in the next, by the end of the week that we're going to accomplish, but you will see some changes out there, hopefully, and those changes will continue on as we move this process forward. Just bear with us, because it's a lot of work, and, but we understand the priority that the council and the community has made of it. Lamont, we're sorry, we're going to do everything we can for you. My phone number is 827-2440, or my email's on the contact page. I'm going to get it nice and bright on the top of the page there at lasvagas.org. If you have a question, call me. We'll do what we can for you. So tonight's encamp, I'm going to say tonight's IRF project was a great example of the hard work that our fairly new homeless outreach team accomplished. I know back in, probably from 2018 to 2023, it was Stacy, me, and all the people that were around these tables trying to lead up our homeless work, and when it was authorized to grab a couple people to create the homeless outreach team, we stole Kristi. I don't know if you noticed or you recognized what went on tonight, but she sat up there and you asked her very articulate questions, and when she can answer some of the HUD rules and some of the other grant requirements as quickly and easily as she did, she's a great addition to the management team here, and I just want to say you did a fantastic job explaining everything, and we're onwards and upwards. We're moving forward with this project, and we're going to see some improvement in that, in that area. Other projects, modernizing and rehabilitating City Hall, establishing a path forward. Other projects, modernizing and rehabilitating City Hall, establishing a path forward for those portables that are outside, the annex, the vacant buildings across the street that once was, the mighty Los Banas Police Department, are all part of our projects that we've got. There are about one E at this point. The animal shelter project, we've got to finish. We've got infrastructure improvements, street paving, residential developments, attracting new commercial businesses, staff recruitment and retention. So we're down to about M at this point, one M. And at some point, those will trail off into other things, other priorities, but those are all the, the fun and exciting things that we're doing behind the scenes every day. And like I said, this agenda packet was just an example, a snapshot of all the hard work that goes on behind the scenes, and I'm really proud to be part of the team. So again, I can't say thank you enough. We'll be back next time, Mr. Mayor. I think that concludes my presentation for tonight, so thank you.
So what you.
You're right, we got one more.
Okay.
I got one more, thank you. It's number twenty, right? My apologies.
Thank God, Lucy.
This is a report regarding executive compensation for the fire chief's salary. On February fourteenth, 2025, based upon annual performance review by the city manager, the fire chief's salary will be increased to sixteen thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars a month for two hundred thousand six hundred and twenty-eight million effective November first, 2022. Oh, yes, so we're going back to November of 2022, because we're a little bit behind on that one. But. That's the.
So wait a second. So this agenda, six hundred and one pages, we're going to have another one of these?
No, you're gone next week, so no, it's going to be really short and quick. When you get back, that would be.
Another six hundred. Okay, thank you so much, Gary. We'll go to, let's see, we got that, we'll go to city council member reports, Evan Sanders. Evan?
I'm going to try to keep this short. So I asked, like I said, I was, I think, for factual information about what sort of the year, but still I'll pick it up. I know that Ms. Hopson appeared, and she's doing her plus eight one of those, so. Gary, I really appreciate you answering all of my emails that I sent you. It's been, I try not to bug you too much, but I appreciate that, you know, when everything is probably one of the worst, and we always get back to you. Let's see here. Happy to have closed the loop on all of the police department salaries and negotiations. It's important, a, a big, a big thing that I was hoping to get was to be able to retain people that work for the city with all these changes that we did, and I, I understand that I think we probably have done that, because I feel like a lot of people told me that we have, we're kind of a training ground for a lot of people, especially, so hopefully that pays really well. Very address C Cameron, that was my other big one, so.
They'll be good for two weeks. Two weeks. Okay, thank you. Evan, council member Marcus Chavez.
Yeah, it's late, I'll try to keep it short. Yeah, I just want to say thanks to Gary. Thank you for, for helping us out, and like Evan, sorry if I'm bugging you a lot. Thanks to Lucy, thanks to all the staff. They've been bugging you with, all with questions, and you all have been coming back with a lot of information. You know, glad we were able to work something out and get a lot of these agreements done as far as pace concerned. You know, I know we weren't involved with a lot of the, what was before, but I'd say sorry to everybody that was affected by that, but I'm glad that we got this almost all wrapped up, and, and just, that's, you know, it's, it's unfortunate, but I'm glad we're moving ahead, and thank you, everybody, and I'll save everything for while you're gone. About that. All right.
Good, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Deborah Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank my colleagues here for nominating me to the Downtown Association. The only thing I don't know is what day they meet. Is there a scheduled day of, no, no particular scheduled date? Like a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
It's typically the third Thursday at nine AM. Typically.
She's, you're at air.
The airboard.
She's at the airboard that day. Well, maybe they can change it. We'll ask them. We'll, yeah, because that, you're the airboard you have to go to.
And I want to give a great shout out to Lucy and to our negotiating attorney for all the hard work they both did to make sure that these agreements went through. And, and I'd like to apologize to our staff for taking so long to see this happen, but well deserved, and I'm glad it's behind us now, and that the people who needed to be made whole are made whole. I appreciate, Gary, the work that you're doing to make one A through Z happen for the city. I'm sure the homeless encampment is a real big priority. So thank you for working on that cleanup and making sure that it happens. The question that I have is in regards to some of the things that happen out there, like some of the residents having multiple animals beyond what our city code allows, you know, how are we going to deal with that? And also, the building of structures out there, which I think is against state code, you know, I'm sure we've got a plan for dealing with that. But the other thing is, I don't know if it would require a city ordinance, or if there's enough ordinance already on the books so that we can limit what can come into those encampments, like you can have your sleeping tent and a cot, or whatever you're sleeping on, and, you know, a chair or something like that. But what I'm seeing, and I, and I saw this just in, on my street, in my neighborhood, people are putting out their things that they don't want. And one of my neighbors put out a rusted, like kitchen shelf rack. That's gone, but the, the little portable refrigerator that they put out on the sidewalk is still sitting there. So our residents are kind of contributing to the issue of the problem with our homeless encampment. And I know we probably have laws on the books about nuisance and such, and I don't know if we need something specific, but if what we already have on the books can help us with our residents not to put out what they don't want anymore, and really should be in the trash can and ends up in the encampment, will certainly help our city. So thank you for what you're doing, and I really appreciate it. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And for myself, tomorrow, we have M C A G meeting, and so we'll, I'll be discussing what goes on in that the next time I come back. I want to thank staff, it's, you know, it's, it's really, I, I've done all, you know, you've heard me say this many times, but I, back in ninety-four, I came on board and I, and had a lot of new ideas, and we changed a lot of stuff, but it's, this time around, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work, there's a lot of new requirements by the state, by, it's crazy how we're doing this. So I want to appreciate everybody that's working with us. I know all the four of us up here, and soon to be five, is asking for a lot from staff. Thank Gary for taking on the job. He didn't have to do that, and, and putting everything together for us. And I will be gone at our next meeting when, when I talk to my wife about running for mayor the second time around. One thing she made me promise is I would not miss our vacations. So she's the only one that can tell me to do something that I listen to, so, so I'll be on vacation our next meeting, I apologize for that. There won't be too many of those meetings I miss, but I, if for some reason you need me, I'll be available on the phone, but I'm sure you can handle it all by yourselves. So anyway, I appreciate it, it's been a long night, appreciate what's got done tonight, and with that, this meeting's adjourned.